So we get to sit down and watch for a little bit?
I don't know, we can.
No, I can't either.
Parking will go out of the coast way too little as far as time concerned. Go.
Ready to go.
Makes a call to order Village of Bartlett, joint special meeting of the zoning board, appeals and the plan commission for July 1st, 2021 at 7:03. Will Secretary Carter roll?
Mark Hopkins?
Here.
Jim Renner, Tim Renner? John Miaso?
Here.
Austin Hopkins?
Here.
Jerry Callis?
Here.
Jim Lumberg?
Next item on our agenda is the approval of the June 10th, 2021 Plan Commission meeting minutes. Is there any question or additions or corrections? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Secretary Carter roll?
John Miaso?
Yes.
Austin Hopkins?
Yeah.
Jerry Callis?
Abstain.
Mark Hopkins?
Yes.
Jim Lumberg?
Yes. Item number three is number 21-07, the 711 at 1500 Route 59. They're requesting a special use permit for packaged liquor sales. Supposed to be a public hearing tonight, but I understand that the public hearing is not ready for tonight. It's going to be carried over to August 12th of 2021.
There was a failure to serve notice to the surrounding property owners, so staff is asking that you continue to the August 12th regular scheduled Plan Commission meeting.
Okay, so it'll be ready for August?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Again this evening, most of the things that we're doing this evening are a public hearing. In the back where the officer is about a clock, on that shelf over there are witness forms. If anyone is going to have a comment, question, we ask that you fill that out and hand it in to staff and we will call you at the appropriate time when the hearing is opened up to the public. Okay, for continuing on our Plan Commission here, old business, new business?
We're going to have a special joint meeting immediately after this special meeting. That's all.
Okay. Anyone on the Plan Commission have any questions or comments? New business, old business? Nope? Okay, then at this time I would ask that we adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Plan Commission's adjourned for now. Okay.
At 7:06, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the zoning board of appeals and the Plan Commission. Village of Bartlett County is a cook to Paige and Kane. Please call the roll.
George Coziel?
Here.
Joe Bano?
Here.
Bob Picaro?
Here.
Michelle Sarwas?
Here.
Charlie DeVoe?
Here.
Mike Weirden?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the May 6-
Nope, nope, nope. We need to call the Plan Commission too. Mark Hopkins? Tim Reinauer? John Miaso?
Here.
Austin Hopkins?
Here.
Jerry Callis?
Here.
Jim Lumberg?
Here.
For the ZBBA is the approval of the May 6, 2021 meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Michelle?
Second.
Seconded by George. Please call the roll.
Joe Bano?
Here.
Oh, yes.
Bob Picaro?
Yes.
Michelle Sarwas?
Yes.
Charlie DeVoe?
Yes.
George Coziel?
Yes.
Mike Weirden?
Yes. Next item on the agenda, case number 20-19, La Petite Resto Bar Tapas. Do we have the mailings, the newspaper notice, and the picture of the sign?
We have the pictures of the sign and the certificate of the publisher.
Mike, I'm going to recuse myself because I am good friends with the people who are petitioning.
Okay, Charlie, we'll be, we have those, all three of those?
So we are waiting on the petitioner to arrive. Half the petition, petition group is here, but the other half is, he has the certified mail receipts, so we're just waiting on him to arrive. Hopefully they'll be here tonight.
Okay, should we mark those exhibits A, B, and C? In the meantime, what you do have. We'll continue this then, or go with the next one?
Charlie, why don't you, you need to publicly state it.
Should we go ahead with the next one then?
So we're still on this project?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. Charlie has, is going to make a statement?
I did make the statement.
Did make the statement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mike, that I was recused myself because I'm very good friends with the Rakesh and Bruce.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, I missed that.
May I lead now?
So do we have an update on how close the petitioner is? He is parking his car. Oh, okay, good.
Staff can give a presentation, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the property itself falls within the original Bartlett corporate limits and was zoned for business in 1941. As a part of the comprehensive rezoning of the village in 1978, the property was zoned to the B1 Village Center District. The site plan for Banbury Fair, which widened the main driveway and proposed a possible through connection to Hickory Avenue, was approved in July of 1987. A site plan for an addition adding first floor and retail space and two additional second floor rooms is approved in 1989. Ordinance number 2004-98 approved a site plan for an addition including first floor space as well as a second floor apartment and a 17-foot variation for a wraparound porch. Ordinance number 2012-41 granted a special use permit for a banquet facility to allow up to six outdoor banquets or events per year. For this case, the petitioner is requesting a site plan amendment for a tapas bar and lounge to be located in an existing 1,235 square foot barn building on the Banbury Fair property. They are also requesting special use permits to allow a restaurant to serve liquor, outdoor seating, live entertainment, and a PUD to allow two principal buildings on one zoning lot. An addition is proposed on the west side of the barn that includes bathrooms, expands the kitchen area, and provides additional seating. Water and sewer service connections would be extended to the barn for these improvements. The building will be under 2,500 square feet, therefore a fire sprinkler system is not required. However, a smoke alarm system will be required. The proposed restaurant would have 40 seats located inside with 62 seats located on the existing patio and lawn space. The petitioner is also requesting a major design exception to reduce the number of required parking spaces from 16 to 14. Two onsite spaces will be designated for the apartment above Banbury Fair and an additional onsite space will be ADA compliant. In accordance with the downtown Bartlett zoning overlay, the proposed restaurant would require eight parking spaces, three for interior seating and five for the exterior seating area. The existing retail store would require six parking spaces with an additional two spaces required for the apartment. The downtown Bartlett zoning overlay allows for on-street spaces located on an abutting street to be counted as a credit towards the parking requirement. Staff has not applied that credit as the spaces in the commuter lot directly across the street require a fee before 11:00 AM. However, the adjacent public parking lot to the east of the property contains 25 parking spaces and 58 spaces are available in the commuter lot directly to the north of the site. The commuter parking spaces are free after 11:00 AM and on weekends. The existing fencing and landscaping would remain or be enhanced to provide screening to the properties to the south. The outdoor dumpster enclosure would be screened by an existing shed structure and gate. The restaurant would operate between the hours of 4:00 PM and 10:00 PM seven days a week. Any amplifiers used for outdoor live entertainment must be approved through the amplifier permit process with the village and a maximum of six large outdoor live entertainment events may take place within a calendar year. These events may utilize the entire site, including the lawn area east of the restaurant, and may or may not use amplification. Fencing for outdoor liquor service would also be required. The staff recommends approval of the petitioner's requests for a site plan amendment and special use permits, subject to the conditions and findings of fact detailed in the staff report. Also, in accordance with the downtown zoning overlay district, major design exceptions and variations are allowed by Article 109C, subject to the conditions and standards detailed in the addendum to the staff report. The petitioner has brought forth the affidavit for the public mailing notice.
Okay.
To be marked as exhibit C.
Exhibit C, yes. Okay, now is the petitioner going to add anything to what was said?
She's not to?
Okay. Any questions from the board? When do you hope to have operations begin? Okay. You need to, up by the microphone?
And introduce yourself, please.
Please raise your right hand. Do you soundly affirm the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Rakesh Chopra, 275 Railroad Avenue.
Okay. Go ahead and add what you were going to say about the-
I was going to say that we'll have it ready once the bathrooms are done next year. So we'll have it operational after that. That's what's required here.
Okay. So is this going to have extensive rehabbing then on the barn, or it's essentially going to have the same look? Same thing, raise your right hand. Do you soundly affirm the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth? State your name and address for the record.
I do, I do. Bruce Sufferin, 316 Oakbrook Court in Bartlett. So the interior of the barn is extensively being remodeled. We just finished putting in new doors and windows to comply with what Brian, the building commissioner originally suggested we needed to do. Beyond that, all the electric is all being ripped out and a new panel is being put in, so all the electric is all going to be new. We've worked through the fire marshal and the fire department on the design of the fire alarm system for the barn.
Okay.
And so beyond that, the major threshold that we're going to be challenged to accomplish, but we will accomplish it, will be tearing down what is the, we call the cottage, which is the building that was to the side of the barn over there. That's going to be all torn down and then a new structure will be built there to house the bathroom and it will be connected to the back of the barn where the prep kitchen will be to facilitate dishwashing and that kind of thing.
Okay.
We're going to great lengths to preserve the character of the barn. The barn has been a commercial property for 30 years and successfully attracted people buying furniture there because of its unique appearance and charm. So we're going to great lengths to preserve all that, but also going to great lengths to do the necessary upgrades to make it safe and, you know, attractive.
Very good. Any other questions from the board?
I don't have a question, but just a comment regarding the parking variance. I view this very similar as more brewing or 120 Live in the downtown area. Obviously, the spaces aren't available. It's not uncommon in other villages to have to walk a block or two and it's demonstrated with the parking in the metro lots and the other small village lots. I think that suffices and I don't have an issue with the parking.
Okay. Anyone else? At this point, we shall, anyone, we'll open this up to the public. Does anyone from the public have any comments?
Terry Hogan?
Hi, my name is Terry Hogan. I live at 350 Wayne Court, Bartlett, Illinois. And, um, excuse me. There's still a little here. I just wanted to say that I'm happy to be here to support Bruce along with Banbury Fair in their effort to get whatever zoning is necessary, whatever they're really trying to accomplish. They have other shops there that are doing very well. They're very nice shops. They're very nice for the neighborhood. They're fun to go to. He's got the Banbury Fair, Good Beans Coffee House and Cafe, which is tremendous. You know, I mean, there's very nice things there. When I saw what Bruce and his team was doing, I was very excited. So I wanted to come here and just say, I'm here to support him and his effort and I'm hoping that the board will approve and help even pave the way for whatever it is he needs to get this accomplished so we can have more shopping and dining opportunities here in Bartlett. I appreciate the time and good luck.
Thank you.
Matthew Newman?
I filled out that form. I didn't know I was going to have to talk. Matt Newman, 310 South Hickory. So I'm pretty close to the property. I'm excited for it. I'm a little worried about noise, but it sounds like there's going to be a separate meeting for the amplifier. Is that right? For the, I heard something about an amplifier code-
They have to get approval for each time that they would request to use it. It's not, it's not an open checkbook.
Okay.
Each amplifier permit would need to come through a staff permitting process.
So I'm about four or five houses down and I have a baby on the way, so it's a concern. But I'm excited to have a re, the other thing is the parking. I would just say that the stuff across the street, I really couldn't see people using that unless we somehow force them to, because you have to, it's across the tracks. You have to go to the next street over, cross over, and then go into the parking. People are too lazy. There's already people parking on the street, across the street, so I'd just like you guys to consider parking in noise. But that's all I have. So, thank you.
Those are the requests I had for this case.
Anyone else have anything to say? Any further discussion or recommendations from the board?
Okay, so how this is going to work is we're going to call for, and let me know if you agree with this, starting with the site plan amendment and the special uses. The Plan Commission will vote on those only. You can choose to vote separately, both items, or together. It's up to you. But we're going to call the roll for the Plan Commission on those two items.
Do you guys want to vote that separately or together?
One motion.
Okay.
Motion.
That's fine.
Okay.
Together.
Okay. And then the last item for the major design exceptions will be voted on or by the zoning board of appeals. Okay? And we'll call that roll separately.
Okay.
So we, yes, we need a motion for, if you're, for the, by the, one of the Plan Commissioners for the site plan amendment and special uses.
Okay, do have a motion to approve the petitioner's request for a site plan amendment and special use permit, subject to the following conditions and findings of facts.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussions? Secretary Carter roll?
John Miaso?
Yes.
Austin Hopkins?
Yes.
Jerry Callis?
Yes.
Mark Hopkins?
Yes.
Jim Lumberg?
Yes.
Okay, now, now we need our portion?
Yes.
I would make a motion to pass along to the village board, a positive recommendation to approve 20-19, La Petite Resto Bar Tapas.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor at this point. I shall close the public hearing portion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Michelle. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
George Coziel?
Yes.
Joe Bano?
Yes.
Bob Picaro?
Yes.
Michelle Sarwas?
Yes.
Mike Weirden?
Yes. Okay, we shall pass on a positive recommendation to the board. Good luck with everything. I can tell you over the years that the Sufferin family has been a very good asset to the community. I wish you good luck on everything. You've always been team players and I know even the Historical Society has done joint things and even little play presentations on your property, so I just hope you continue to have success.
Next item on the agenda is number 20-16, the residents of Bartlett Station, Site E. They are looking for a second amendment to the ordinance, number 2003-123, to allow for 104 residential apartments in one building. B, amending the special use for PUD to allow for 104 residential apartments in one building. Amending the approved preliminary final PUD plan, the residential site plan, and amending the following exhibits attached to ordinance 2003-123. Roberta, you want me to read all those?
Up to you.
Okay, I'll go through it. Residential site plan, Exhibit E2. Residential building first floor plan, Exhibit E4. Residential building garage floor plan, Exhibit E5. Landscape plan, Exhibit E6. Building elevations, Exhibit E7. Modifications to the Bartlett zoning and subdivision and PUD ordinance, Exhibit E8, number three. First amendment to ordinance 2005-124, to allow for 104 apartment units in one building. Amending the following exhibits attached to ordinance 2005-124, which is residential buildings three, four, and five. First floor plan, Exhibit 1. Residential buildings three, four, and five. Second and third floor plan, Exhibit 2. Residential buildings three, four, and five. Elevations, Exhibit 3. Platte of consolidation. Variations from the downtown zoning overlay district. He will be other frontage building to zone, corner side yard setback, minimum rear setback, surface parking and loading location, rear yard, maximum height, Table C prohibited materials, Table E, minimum parking spaces. And that's the end of that list. This is a public hearing. Again, if anyone is going to make a comment, question, we ask that you fill out a witness form and hand in to staff. Do we have the notices, notifications?
Yes, we do.
We do. Okay. Is the petitioner here this evening?
Yes, they are. They, I think it's the whole front row.
Okay, could you stand and everyone else that's going to give testimony tonight then be sworn in? You swear the testimony you're about to give is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge? Thank you. Okay. Staff, would you like to give us some background?
Sure. Before we start that, I would like to add, we received additional petition signatures. I've got three pages, four pages, five pages of additional signatures that I would like to enter into the record as Exhibit D. Okay? Also to note, in your packet, we received emails, I did put those into your packets, from Loretta Goddard and from Bruce Dubiel, and additional petitions and narratives. So those were included in your packet. Okay?
Okay.
So this property was part of the original Village of Bartlett corporate limits from 1891 and was zoned industrial in 1941. U.S. Flexible Tubing Company, later known as Flexwell Inc., built a plant on the property in 1949 to manufacture metal hoses. As part of the comprehensive rezoning of the village in 1978, the property was zoned I-1 light industrial. In 2003, the property was rezoned to the PUD plan development district, which granted special use permits for the mixed-use town center PUD and approved the preliminary final subdivision slash PUD and mixed use and residential site plans. The original PUD plan included two mixed-use buildings and five residential condo buildings with 24 units each. One mixed-use building and five, one mixed-use building and two of the residential condos were built in accordance with the original PUD plan. In 2005, the PUD plan was amended to allow for a modification of the floor plans for the three remaining residential condo buildings and to increase the number of units within each building from 24 to 27 units. The increase in units reduced the parking ratio from 1.45 to 1.30 for the remaining three condo buildings. One of the condo buildings, Building 3, was built in accordance with the amended PUD plan. This one, this is Building 3. The two condo buildings that were planned for this site, which were Buildings 4 and 5, were never constructed and the village has retained ownership of the undeveloped property, commonly known as Site E in the TOD plan. Tonight, the petitioner is requesting to amend the approved ordinances, all of the exhibits that the chairman mentioned, the preliminary final PUD plan and special use to allow for the construction of a 104-unit apartment complex. This building would include a mix of 14 studios, 48 one-bedroom, and 42 two-bedroom units. There would be 100 storage lockers located in the underground parking garage, as well as a package room, community space, fitness center, lobby, and office area proposed on the first floor. The building would include a security entry system at both the north and south entrances. The proposed building would be five stories in height with a mean height of 60 feet 1 inch and constructed primarily with four different color palettes of brick and a Renaissance stone base. The rooftop mechanicals would be located behind a three-foot, four-inch-high parapet wall, which architecturally provides for varying roof heights on each of the elevations. The proposed density for this development would be 55.6 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density for this development would be 55.6 dwelling units per acre. The proposed, uh, preliminary final PUD plan identifies 73 surface parking spaces and 48 underground garage spaces, for a total of 121 spaces. The downtown zoning overlay district requires 130 parking spaces for this site, or 1.25 spaces per unit. The petitioners are requesting a major design exception to reduce the parking requirement by nine spaces, or to allow 1.16, um, spaces per unit. An eight-foot-wide multi-use path is included as part of this plan, located along the west property line. This path was a recommendation from the TOD plan, which promoted connectivity through this development to the Metro Commuter Station. A full curb cut is proposed along Berto Avenue, which would also serve as the construction entrance and exit. All construction vehicles would be required to approach the site from Berto via Devon Avenue, and no construction would be permitted along railroad. Both indoor and outdoor bike racks would be located on the site, as required in the downtown zoning overlay. There would be 37 hanging bike racks located in the underground garage, with three racks provided spaces for six bikes located along the Railroad Avenue frontage. The overall length of this building form along the Railroad Avenue frontage requires that two benches be placed along the street skate. And the petitioners have included a bench east and west of the north entrance. Two additional benches have been placed along the south property line, within a seating area, located adjacent to the bike path. Several native trees and some of the existing vegetation will also be preserved along the south property line. The existing trees located on the adjoining apartment complex property to the south will remain. The petitioner is also requesting a plaid of consolidation, which would combine the four existing parcels to create one zoning lot. The major, major design exceptions are being requested by the petitioner, and those include the other frontage to build to zone, corner side yard setback, uh, the 7.5-foot minimum setback is required, and five feet is being provided. A minimum rear setback, 7.5 feet is the minimum required, 2.8 inch, two feet and eight inches is provided. Surface parking and, and loading location in the rear yard. The rear parking shall not extend beyond the building, and the parking extends two feet four inches beyond the building. The maximum height, four stories is the maximum, five stories is provided. Prohibited materials, metal sheets, aluminum composite, to allow aluminum composite panels as a minor facade material. Minimum parking spaces, 1.25 parking spaces per unit is required, 1.16 parking spaces per unit is being provided. The petitioner, um, has provided a separate response to each of the major design exception requests and their, and their justification, and those have been included in your packet. Landscape, photometric, and engineering plans are currently being reviewed by the staff, and the staff does recommend approval of the petitioner's requests for amending the special use, the preliminary final PUD plan, the, the above-referenced exhibits associated with each of the town center ordinances, and the plaid of consolidation, subject to the conditions and findings of fact outlined in the staff report. And the petitioners are here tonight.
Does anyone on the plan commission have any questions for staff at this time?
A quick question, has any other type of development come up like this before in the village?
Can you be more specific?
Has there been any other five-story apartment buildings that have either applied or have been reviewed, or anything in this regard, similar to this?
So, are, are you asking regarding the height, or the type of use?
Both.
And are you asking, has it come before this commission, or to, just to the staff for concept review?
Um, let's go to, just to the commit, plan, uh, plan commission or village board committee of the whole.
The answer is no.
Okay.
Have we had other buildings in town, um, that are at this height limit? Yes, and exceeded the height limit. Claire Oaks property, just to the west on, uh, West Bartlett Road, the extension of railroad, is actually, um, 75 feet tall, and the plan commission approved and recommended for approval, 80 feet.
Anyone else on the plan commission? Anyone on the zoning board have any questions?
I, I think compared to, since you cited the property there at West Bartlett Road and 59, that's a, kind of a higher-end development.
And that, it was not that property, I'm sorry. It was Claire Oaks.
Claire Oaks.
That's Victory Center. I have that height too.
Okay.
Victory Center is actually 42 feet four inches.
All right. But thi, this is, this proposal is also higher-end with better material, and, um, even with the studio apartments, that typically is not going to generate, um, a lot of cars. Correct?
That, that is correct. I, I, I think the petitioner has a presentation to demonstrate, um, those statistics.
Okay. Any questions from anyone else on the zoning board?
Should I hold back on questions regarding parking? Or is it appropriate now?
Is that going to be included in the presentation?
I, I, I think you should hear the petitioner's presentation on the parking, and, and then you could ask the question.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. No other questions for staff? Okay, the petitioner, would he have anything he'd like to add? Could you state your name and address, please?
John Picarsky. I am an attorney with offices at 55 West Monroe Street in Chicago.
No, you've already.
You've already sworn in. They did them all the way.
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and, um, members of both the plan commission and the ZBA. It's my distinct privilege and pleasure to present to you this evening, the residences at Bartlett, Bartlett, Bartlett Station. This, in my estimation, is probably one of the most exciting, uh, ideas that has come to the board in, in, uh, probably decades, according to what I, uh, understand. I represent, actually, MMAJLLC, uh, but more specifically its principal, Manny Raffidia, who is seated to my extreme right. The property in question is at the southwest corner of Railroad Avenue and Berto. The property measures about 81,500 square feet. It is currently owned by the village. The property has a frontage along Railroad Avenue of 100, strike that, 376 frontage feet. It is irregular in shape. If I were a, an engineer, I'd call it trapezoidal, uh, but not be... It's irregular. The, uh, property in question has four tax numbers, or four parcels. Uh, one of the things that we are seeking is to consolidate those four parcels into one. The zoning is part of the Bartlett Downtown Plan, with a downtown zoning overlay and a TOD overlay. It has been subject to at least two tries before this board, uh, which were both voted favorably, but which were never completed, unfortunately. The building in question that we are presenting, uh, contains 104 units. We are providing, in my opinion, 137 parking spaces. That's 48 spaces in the building, 73 spaces outside the building, and 16 auxiliary spaces in the shopping center, which my client owns to the south of the subject site. For a total of 137 parking spaces, or one, slightly over a 1.3 ratio. The makeup of the units are 14 studios, uh, which have about 650 square feet in each unit, and will rent for about $1,000 per month. It has 48 one-bedrooms, which have about 800 square feet in them, and should rent for approximately 100, $1,240 per month. And it has 42 two-bedroom units, which will contain approximately, uh, 1,200 square feet, and rent for about $1,860 per month. Our developer, Manny, uh, is not unknown to this village. He is of the village. He purchased a faltering shopping center within 500 feet of the subject site, and turned it around. It is now a viable, tax-generating entity, of which the village can be exceptionally proud. That's called the Streets of Bartlett. As an exhibition of faith in the, the community, Manny is about to spend, with your permission, about $15 million. Now, you can only imagine what that does to the tax base, uh, of the Village of Bartlett. Also, of course, uh, the subject, uh, development will be walking distance to the various shopping areas that have been created within the village and within 500 feet of the subject site. Now, the subject of 104 units, and how we arrived at that, this is not an arbitrary number that was just picked. In order to develop the subject site, a reasonable rate of return is approximately 8%. In order to do that, based upon the cost of building, land, and soft costs, 104 units is mandated. This is the amount that we have always spoken of, that this is the amount that we need in order to make this a viable project. We have expressed this to the village board, and they have entered into a contract with us, that is subject to obtaining 104 units. So the legislative body of this village has spoken, uh, as to their ideas as to the density of this project. Now, I, uh, have several people here who can speak. I have limited, uh, the, uh, speakers to just three, uh, and I think I've taken enough of your time already. The first will be Matthew Haylock, H-A-Y-L-O-C-K, of Arch America, our architect. The second will be Mr. William James, J-A-M-E-S, of Camero's and Associates, Land Planners. And the third will be Mr. Timothy Dorn, D-O-R-O-N, of Fish Transportation Consultants. Each will speak as to their own discipline, and, uh, will stand for questions. I have also with me, uh, Mr. Jeremy Raffidia, and Mr. Manny Raffidia, uh, representing the ownership, uh, Mr. Craig Downden, D-O-W-D-A-N, our landscape architect, and Mr. Amzan Hamdan, H-A-M-D-A-N, our civil engineer. I will offer them for questions from the board. And with that, I will rest.
Thank you.
I can see the relief in everybody's eyes.
Could you state your name and address, please?
I'm Matt Haylock. I'm an architect with Arch America in Gurnee, Illinois. The address is 34121 North, uh, US 45. I'm sorry, it's Gray's Lake, Illinois. We recently moved there. And, uh, thank you for having us this evening. I'm going to talk about the architecture a little bit. Roberta did a great job of walking everyone through the project, but I'd like to maybe start over and kind of highlight some of the key features that, uh, we'd like to focus on. Is a PUD plan ahead of this? Again, this is, uh, the PUD plan, which Roberta's already, uh, started to speak about. Again, this is a five-story building, um, with 104 apartments. We have two entrances into the building. The main entrance, I got it, Roberta, I got it. Okay, thank you. On Railroad Avenue, we've got an entrance in the front, and then around the back on the parking side, we've got an entrance right there. So they both look like, both sides of the building look identical, um, both are front entrances. We also have some entrances on the side here, and there's a side there. Those are the stairway fire, uh, fire exits. Also, a lot of people like to walk down the stairs and exit the building, instead of taking the elevator. Those are exits that they can use to, to go outside. The vehicular access, as Roberta's mentioned, is off of Berto, and we have our 73 parking stalls here. You drive in through the back, you can loop around and come out. By the way, trash, uh, storage in this building is in the basement, and to get to the basement, you go down the ramp here, which will be heated, and go into the basement at this location. Trash will be wheeled out during trash mornings, and, uh, maintenance person will pull the dumpsters up with a vehicle, and they'll be temporarily stationed right there, where the garbage truck can pick them up, load them up, and then, uh, they will bring them back downstairs. So you won't see any trash from outside the building at all. The back of the building, which faces the, uh, one of the residential developments behind us, there's a, uh, drainage swale that runs across this right now, and there's a stormwater pipe, I believe it's 15 inches, it might be 12, but it wraps around, comes out to the city sewer that's located here, the storm sewer. That same sewer, um, serves all these developments, or all these buildings in this area. That sewer follows the street, and about two blocks down, there's a, a shared community detention basin. So this site doesn't actually have detention on it, um, it's shared and through that basin. So the engineer has already designed the site, has used all the, uh, current best engineering practices to make sure that all the stormwater will stay on the site, will not spill over the property lines, and it will be maybe even better than it is now. It will be following all the codes that are required, as well as all the staff approvals. And there's, there's a tree line back along this edge of the property. The property's for the most part vacant, but there's a lot of trees along this property line. We're going to keep them all, I believe, and then we're going to add additional buffer along this area, so that, um, there's screening to the parking lot. Regarding to the deviation... Regarding to the deviations that Roberta was talking about, a lot of those had to do with similar setbacks. As John had mentioned, this building, this site is trapezoidal a lot of times when you're asking for deviations, or hardship, or, you know, challenges that we have. Well, this building, this front, this property line is skewed here. It jogs back and forth along the street, and it's much narrower on this side. So, you can see if the site was even a little bit more straight, we'd be able to get several more parking stalls in the back. And if it was actually square, we wouldn't be talking about parking tonight at all. We would have met the ordinance easily. But to be that as may, I'll let the experts talk about that later. The setbacks are in this location. Side yard setback requirement along the street here is 7.5 feet. Because the property, what happened is the building got shifted this way because we needed the room to get into the garage. You know, could we have pushed it two feet farther this way? It'd be really difficult. We want to make sure that we have enough room for the cars to go down the ramp and get in the garage without pulling too hard of a turn there. And with the path here, the pedestrian path that we have, which is eight feet wide, we're really pinching inches right at this particular spot. So, it's only five feet here, but you can see that it increases to over 20 feet here. So, the average is well over seven and a half feet. The other deviation that we're asking for is to allow the parking to project past the end of the building. Well, you can see that, well, if you determine this the end of the building, well, the parking doesn't project past it. But if you're measuring it from this very corner, it does project past a couple of feet. So, that's all we're asking for, is a deviation there. And this only needs to be, well, I'm sorry. I'll just leave it at that. The other deviation is a rear yard setback. And that's not a setback to the building. That's a setback to the parking stalls. And we're trying to get as many parking stalls as we could, so we got squeezed down in this end here. So, we've only got a little over two and a half feet here. She said, Roberta mentioned, two feet, eight inches. That's what we have, I believe. And so, that includes, the cars will not overhang into there. There's enough room in the parking stall for that. So, that's one of the deviations that we're looking for. Otherwise, I think Roberta covered everything else. Thank you. Can you send us to the next page? Thank you. So, this is the view from railroad. Obviously, this is a five-story building. We talked about that already. I'll get back into that. Roberta mentioned that there's a variety of different materials. We have a Renaissance stone at the base. Renaissance stone is not what's called the cast stone. You'll hear that term thrown around a lot. That's a concrete product that looks like stone. That's not what this is. This is calcium silicate, which basically has the same properties as limestone. We have that used all throughout the building. It actually has a more consistent finish and color to limestone. We've got three different colors of brick, starting from a dark brown to a medium brown to a light color. And even on these highest cornice here, we've got an almost white color brick. A couple of reasons why we did that. One, you know, a lot of people like to have a variation of the color of the facade. I personally like that. The other thing is, it starts to help with the perception of height. This is our neighbor across, right to the east. It's the condo building. It's four stories with the roof. This is pretty much in scale or very close, anyway. So, you can see in their building, it's all brown into the dark roof. And so, you can see the mass of the building. It's pretty obvious by the colors. It's pretty consistent. In our building, we're kind of gradient, kind of varying it dark to light as you get closer to the sky. It kind of helps minimize the look or the height of the building. Makes it feel not quite as tall as it might seem. While I'm on this, one of the other deviations that we are requesting is the use of composite aluminum panels. What that is, I think what might have, when people wrote the ordinance, they might have been thinking about just aluminum sheet metal, which you'll see on the tops of buildings a lot. It has a lot of waviness to it. It's basically just thin sheet metal. Has no reinforcement to it at all. What we're talking about using is this material. It's called the composite aluminum panel. It has a thicker sheet of aluminum on both sides, and it has a material, I'll call it a thin plastic, on the inside. It's very durable. It doesn't bend. It's designed to last the life of the building, and it's going to look great. Staff has already approved this after we sent them what we were proposing. So, that's what an aluminum composite panel is.
Matt, we're passing around that sample that you submitted, so they're seeing that.
Thank you. So, where we're using that is in between the windows here and here in these panels. We're trying to create a little bit of a variety in the facade, maybe give a little more upscale feel, more of a modern feel, if you will. But we're still using a lot of classical materials. We're also using aluminum composite panels at the top of these roofs over the balconies and at these copings over the projections of the roof. So, it's going to look very clean, very, I don't say commercial look, but it's got a very tight, high-end look to it. The entire facade will look that way. And this is the same look you're going to have on all four sides of the building. As far as the quality of the materials, again, this building is going to be load-bearing masonry walls with precast concrete floors with a two-inch concrete topping. So, the floors are going to be 12 inches thick of concrete. The walls will have at least eight inches of masonry, plus the exterior cladding. The roof will be steel frame, and we primarily do that so that it's easier to create the slope on the roof and provide the insulation in there. So, this is a very expensive building to construct. It's a high-end building that will, very little maintenance. It's going to look the same now as it will 20 years from now. It won't require any painting. The nice thing about the material, the type of construction, is that it's fire-resistant, for one thing. The building won't be fully sprinkled, of course, and it will have all the fire alarms. But it's also very quiet. It's going to be kind of really difficult for your neighbor to hear you from up above. You have to hit the floor pretty loudly for them to hear you at all. Same thing applies to the exterior of the building. It's very quiet. If the residents hear the train at all, the ones in the back of the building, I doubt they will. They'd be very slight. It might just be because of the windows. But it's going to be a very quiet building and a very well-constructed building. Again, on the height, I want to talk about that real briefly. So, that's the big, one of the big issues tonight. So, our building is from the finished floor, which is right here, to this typical parapet is 59 feet, two inches. The grade is roughly six inches below that. Obviously, we don't want to have the grade right at that floor level. So, to grade, the site is almost flat, around 90% of it. It drops off a little bit, coincidentally, right at the end, facing the neighbors, but that's where the drop-off is. So, this building is really, from here, grade to here, is 60 feet, four inches. The neighbors' building, just as a comparison, it's four stories. However, based on the construction drawings, finished floor to the highest point of the roof, which is kind of the typical that runs throughout the building, and there are some other features that it has. The drawings say that it's exactly 50 feet. If you go to the building, I don't have the drawings for the grading, and those weren't made available to us. But if you go to the building and look at it from outside, the finished floor is perched up a little bit there. It's about four feet. That's just a guess. And it's pretty consistent along the street. There may be a little variation because the street may slope slightly, but it's about four feet. So, if you take that four feet from grade to the top, that's 54 feet. Our building is 62 feet, four, or 64 feet, 60 feet, four inches, right? So, that's a difference of just about six feet. I'm six feet, one. So, the overall height difference between the two buildings is about my height. And I think in the overall scheme of things, and the way our building is designed, I think it's really... The other thing is, this building, we don't want the building to look just like the neighbors. I don't think they want our building to look just like theirs. I think we want to create a little bit of variety, and varying heights is a good thing. That's how you get a street scape. And that's how you get the beautiful skyline that Chicago has. Varying buildings, varying heights, varying looks. That's what we have here. We've got varying looks. The difference in height, even though it's one story, because their building is partly pulled out of the ground, their garage is partially above the ground, the difference is really minimal, in my opinion. Like I said, it's about right of me. So, in the overall scheme of things, I think we're in pretty good shape there. So, Roberta, next page, please. So, this is, these are the elevations. Everything that I discussed is already on here. It's just a two-dimensional view. It's not very exciting. But you'll see is, well, Roberta, why don't you keep going? There's a building section as well. There you go. So, this is a building section of ours. This is our first floor. This is at the worst-case scenario. This is actually at the very end of the building. This is the, happens to be the east end of the building. And we showed this because this is the worst-case scenario where we're going to have a couple of feet from the first floor to the grade. Our first-floor ceiling, it's actually called out as 11 feet there. And we're going to have a drop ceiling. We're going to have mechanicals. We're going to have plumbing and so forth. We're going to collect a lot of utilities on the first floor. But the finished ceiling is going to be a very luxurious, 10 feet on the first floor, nine feet on the second floor, third floor, fourth floor, and 10 feet on the top floor. Sure, if we wanted to, we could knock a couple more feet off of this, make it less luxurious. But that's not the goal here. We want this to be a high-end feeling building, and that we kind of like to keep the ceiling heights that we have. You'll see the section is showing the parapet. And these are typical air conditioning units. Those are residential-style air conditioning units. Each apartment will have its own HVAC system, its own air conditioning condenser on the roof. Those range in height from about three feet to maybe close to three and a half feet. We have a three-foot, four-inch parapet. But this is at the high point of the roof. The roof slopes down to the roof drains. So, these rooftop air conditioning condensers really aren't going to be seen from anywhere. We will have, maybe, we'll have in the center of the building, we're going to have a slightly taller rooftop unit that's going to serve the common areas. But that's behind these taller features. If you see anything, it might just be that one top of that unit, but you'd probably have to be a mile away to even notice it. So, next, please. Same thing. This is really a detail of everything that I already called out. All the materials, all the way up the building, are all called out there, if you'd like more information.
What slide would you like me to? I have floor plans.
Floor plan, go to the garage plan, thank you. Oh, first-floor plan. So, the typical floor has 21 units. This unit, the first floor only has 20. That's why we have 104 units. We lost a unit here to provide the vestibule coming in the front, the vestibule coming in the back. We have the community room with a little, kind of a serving area. It's not a kitchen and a bathroom. And we've got an exercise room here, a luxurious lobby. We also have electrical, mechanical rooms. The trash, people will bring their trash down the center of the building. And we have separate trash chutes, one for recycling and one for standard trash. The bigger units, the two-bedroom units, are here and here, basically where the building is projecting out a little bit and in here. Next, please. Same thing on the upper floors. This kind of highlights the typical units, the typical one-bedrooms. This is, the studios are the smaller ones typically at the stairs. We tucked one in at the center as well. All of these units are going to be, the common term is open concept plan now. The kitchens will all have islands in them. They're all going to have granite countertops. We'll have wood flooring throughout. Everything that you'd expect in an upper-end apartment. I've already talked about the ceiling heights. And this is the garage. So, you'll be coming in the basement garage at this end. We've got 48 parking stalls. We've got a very large storage room at the end with individual storage lockers. And we've also got some storage lockers at each end, so every tenant has their own storage locker. We also, sorry. We also have some bike storage here. They look like they're storage sheds, but they're really hanging spots for the bicycles. We have two elevators for the building. These will be high-speed elevators. There's our trash room here, where the dumpsters will be held. And the building will have a generator for backup power, primarily for the fire pump and the elevator and the emergency light, everything. That's pretty much it. With that, I'll turn it over to our, who's first? Mike? So, Mike is our zoning and land planning expert. And, Bill, sorry about that. Just not tonight.
Your name and address, please?
William James, Principal with Camero's Limited, offices at 411 South Wall Street, Chicago, Illinois. I'm here to talk about the land use and zoning aspects of the project. These are the topics that we'll cover here today, the downtown zoning overlay district regulations. We understand that this is the first major project to be considered for approval under your downtown zoning overlay. So, I want to say a few words about that, look at the subject site, the surrounding land uses, talk about the project design in terms of your zoning overlay district standards, and then specifically about the major design exceptions. Next slide. So, our firm has a lot of expertise in zoning and TOD zoning. We do zoning ordinances for major cities across the country, including cities like Baltimore, Buffalo, Las Vegas. We're currently working in Charlotte, North Carolina. We did a TOD district for Charlotte in support of their light rail system that they're building there. So, we have a lot of expertise in zoning and TOD zoning. And just want to say that town centers require public intervention. You probably know this. Your staff knows this. They're not things that evolve naturally. You have to induce them. You have to guide them into being. I think you've done a great job with your town center so far. But you need public intervention. I think your form-based regulations are part of that intervention. These regulations are different from the standards in your base zoning classifications, okay? So, the base zoning classifications really identify minimums and maximums. They create a very large envelope within which you can do a lot of different kinds of design and project design. Whereas your TOD regulations in your downtown are much more prescribed. They're very specific in terms of the kinds of buildings and how they should be designed. You have build-to lines that you don't have in your base zoning regulations. And also, the intent of the downtown overlay district regulations is that they're more in the form of guidelines, less hard and fast than in the base district regulations, where you are expected to conform to all of the base district regulations and need a variation if you don't conform. Here, in the downtown zoning overlay, if you don't conform, you go through a major exception process. And the criteria for that is different than the criteria for variations. And frankly, the standard is lower because it's understood that specific projects will not meet each and every one of the design regulations in the overlay oftentimes. The main thing is to get the big picture right. Make sure you have projects that will help you create the kind of town center that fulfills your vision. And oftentimes, that includes development that is compact, that is fairly dense, that has some height to it, so you know that you're creating the kind of prominence that you want for your town center, that the development as a whole creates a walkable community, that you have a synergy between the kinds of uses that are there. These are all things that I think you want to get right as part of the big picture. The details are important, but really secondary. And so, those would be things that would be the design exceptions in this particular case here. Next slide. So, in terms of the site in this... So, um, in terms of the site and the surrounding uses, our subject site is here. Uh, these are the surrounding uses that we have. Obviously, the commuter station here, this town center is actually mixed-use with, with some residential above and, um, ground-floor, um, retail. Item three here is what we call a town center, uh, residential. It is designed and, and, and built to be a town, a town center type of residential, very compact, quite dense, actually. Uh, it is the kind of thing you want in a town center. This area here, I think, was developed long before the, the town center and the, uh, uh, downtown overlay zoning was created. It's more suburban in character. Um, uh, this is this, uh, the, uh, commercial that is along, uh, Bertow and Devon, uh, the streets of Bartlett. Um, for reference, we have this auxiliary parking that we will be using to supplement our parking onsite. Tim Doran will talk about that more. Um, and so tho-, that's kind of the lay of the land in terms of surround, surrounding uses. This is an aerial oblique of, of this area, uh, looking at it from, uh, the north to the south. This is our subject site. This is the existing, um, what we call town center residential to, to the west, and that town center retail McDeuce area here, the, the, um, commuter station is here. So we can see that, uh, residential is, is fairly dense, and that's the kind of thing that you want in your town center. And I think our project is also dense and compact and also fits in with the vision for the town center. Next slide. Um, I'm not going to go over the project design the way Matt, the architect, did, but more in terms of how it fits into your vision for the town center. So I think, uh, building with this kind of design is the kind of design that you want in your town center. A lot of thought and effort went into this. It's not a plain, flat building. Uh, there's a lot of fenestration, a lot of visual interest in the building, and quite frankly, it's an attractive building. Um, I think that really is important in your town center. You need attractive buildings. I think you've done a good job of that in the, uh, development that has been built here, and I think this would fit into that as well. Next slide. Uh, Matt talked about some of the design exceptions, um, and, um, particularly, I think, the yard exceptions are relatively minor. Uh, he talked about this. There are a couple of pinch points, uh, on the side yard and in the rear yard, where we have actually fairly generous yards on, on these sides of the building, but because the, uh, site is trapezoidal, you get a rectangular building, it's not going to be parallel to the different lot lines that we have. We need to, uh, have some slightly, uh, smaller yards at these pinch points here and at here, and you can see that there's a lot of open space around. Interestingly, uh, there's a generous, uh, building setback to the west. Um, I believe Matt did mention this, is about 150 feet between, uh, our proposed building and the existing building to the west. That's a lot of space. I, I think that minimizes, uh, impact that we, we would have in terms of our slightly taller building, um, next to their slightly lower building. Um, and if you go to the next slide, please. So these, um, are the design exceptions that, that I identified. I believe they're consistent with the public hearing notice that was published, so I'm not going to go over all, all of these in detail, um, but we, we have, um, uh, some variation on the, uh, the front build-to zone. Again, because that front lot line is irregular in shape, but we, we need a little bit of, of deviation from that. The corner-side yard setback we talked about, uh, at the pinch point, we, we, we need a little relief from that 7.5 feet, but we have, uh, generally a generous yard along, along the side yard, along Bertow. Uh, the, the setback for the rear yard is the same. We have a, a small pinch. Uh, generally speaking, there's a generous yard along the rear lot line. Uh, surface parking and loading, um, that would be, again, on the rear yard. The height, uh, we're asking for one story above, uh, the height called for in your downtown zoning overlay. Um, I don't think that is a, a, a major point, really. Uh, I think it's much better to have a little taller building than a, a shorter building. Uh, you want the kind of mash, you want the kind of height and prominence that the building will give you in your town center to make people kind of sit up and take notice, uh, that they're in a different place, a special place within the town, uh, and you have taller buildings and more density in your town center area. Um, uh, the materials Matt covered, I'm not going to go over that. I think they're relatively minor, and the quality of materials on the exterior of the building will be high-quality, and it will produce a, a very attractive building. And the parking, uh, we're slightly under, uh, the minimum required. I will say, in TOD locations, this is not unusual. Uh, I was part of a, a project design in Evanston where we had, uh, approved 168 units and only had a, a net addition to the site of 37 spaces. Um, and, uh, we were parking the rest of our people, uh, on off-site, uh, locations. There was an abundance of, of spaces in other buildings and other properties, uh, that was known to the city. I think we have a similar condition here where we have abundant parking across the street, except at certain hours. Uh, the auxiliary parking that we're going to have, um, short distance away, will, will compensate, uh, for, for the shortage that we have, uh, and I don't think parking will be a, a problem for this, uh, for this project. Next slide. Uh, here we go over, and it's in my report that I believe you have. Uh, I'm not going to go over all of this in detail, but I believe all of the design exceptions we're asking for meet the criteria in your ordinance. Uh, I can go over that in detail if you have specific questions. Um, uh, the exceptions are needed to fulfill the intent of your town center district, to create kind of project that, uh, again, is consistent with the big-picture idea that you have for, for, uh, your town center, um, and the, uh, very, uh, the exceptions will not create any impact on other properties. Next slide. Um, okay, that really, uh, is what I wanted to say in support of the project and addressing land use and zoning, um, specifically, and I know that, uh, Tim Doran, our Parking and Transportation Consultant, wants to talk about parking specifically, so I'm going to turn this over to, to Tim.
Name and address, please.
Yes. Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Tim Doran. I'm the Senior Transportation Consultant with Fish Transportation Group. Uh, we are located at 1800, um, Displanes Avenue in Forest Park, and we've been in business for well over 25 years. Um, I would like to mention parenthetically that we just finished up a project working for you with Roberta. We did the West Bartlett Road corridor study, um, in coordination with Cook County, so I think good things are going to come out of that. Um, my partner, Cindy Fish, also worked on the town center plan with Solomon Cordwell Bend some years back, so we're very familiar with the area. Um, I've got a quick outline here because I think you all have a copy of my report, uh, where I outlined a number of things, but the key thing, I think, the key thing is parking, um, and that's the elephant in the room, so to speak. The key to parking, and I've worked on a lot of TOD studies, transportation-oriented development studies, is to utilize the assets that are around you, number one, i.e. metro parking, um, and right-size parking on your property. And then, then if there's a further, um, proactive approach to it, find some auxiliary parking, and not to build an abundance, an overabundance of parking, uh, anywhere but to right-size parking. To that extent, we reference in our report and tonight, other communities and the national standards which are put forth by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE, where they've surveyed, surveyed a number of these type of units nationally. They also have some sites that are locally. Their average for a suburban site within a half-mile, well, you're within 200 feet of a rail station, is 1.15 spaces per dwelling unit. Somebody's going to be aghast at that, I'm sure, say, "That's not enough parking." So we have a plan for that, and I'd like to walk through some things, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know that the site is 81,500 square feet approximately, about 1.75 acres, 1.7 acres, 104 dwelling units, 121 parking spaces onsite, of which 73 are outside, 48 are in a garage. Code in this area, in the downtown area, in the overlay district, calls for 1.25 spaces per dwelling unit. Um, the site is located in the downtown district, um, in the Bartlett Town Center Overlay District, next to Metro. Um, Metro parking is available after 11:00 a.m. and on weekends to the public, which means, the question always comes up, "What are you going to do on Father's Day?" I usually hear it from the public. What are you going to do when someone, uh, on Christmas, on Father's Day, on religious holidays? Um, and that's where overflow parking goes into the Metro a lot. But in addition to that, we have a plan for additional parking. Talk a little bit about Railroad Avenue, a single lane in each direction, turn lane into the Metro parking lot going eastbound, turn lane at Main Street going westbound, 25 miles an hour. Um, it's not signed for no parking, but you can't park there. It's not wide enough to park with those turn lanes, so it's essentially, it's not, it's not, there's no parking there. Um, Bertow Avenue is kind of a different animal. Um, it's a single lane in each direction, a lot of turn lanes, left turn lanes from Devon, uh, going north, uh, in, in the developments at the shopping center, and then at the residential development a little bit north of that, and then at Railroad Avenue. I believe, uh, that there could be some consolidation of that space. You don't need those long tapers. It carries about 8,000 cars a day. That is not a high-volume roadway. I believe at certain points along there, most likely proximate or nearby to our development, that could be restriped, and some parking could be arranged on the east side. I truly believe that. We haven't done any design plans yet, and I'll leave that to your design, and to Roberta and your design people and your contracted engineers. Um, a big importance is, it was mentioned before, is, uh, Mr. Fidia owns the shopping center to the south, very successful, has turned that into a very successful shopping center, and that slide there, um, and it's in your report also, shows that from our site to the spaces which we're suggesting as auxiliary parking right there, 16 spaces, which by the way, we have availability for more, right there, just south of that, but we said 16 spaces is within 525 feet. Now, Mr. Pekarsky mentioned that the frontage of our property is 300-plus feet, so it's not much more to walk from this point down to there for the 16 spaces, but I'll get into that. How are we going to allocate those 16 spaces in a second, because I think that's important. With those 16 spaces, we have 137 total spaces, 1.16, 121 onsite plus a 16, 137. That brings us to a 1.31 parking ratio with the auxiliary spaces that are only 500 feet away, 525 feet away, which is essentially a little bit more than the frontage of our property. Um, we will promise, warrant, whatever I can say, uh, to clear that sidewalk. They're newer sidewalks, they're in great shape, so when we, when there's over, uh, an inch or two inches of snowfall, we are plowing our property there and taking snow off-site. We will additionally plow that sidewalk every time there's snowfall to make a clear, convenient path for those people, um, that are walking to the auxiliary parking lot, which is a 525-foot walk. That's about a two-and-a-half-minute walk, and I just, I didn't make that up. Those are standards from the Illinois Department of Transportation, that people walk three-and-a-half feet per second. Some people walk five feet per second, but seniors, um, uh, some seniors, not all of them, I'm a senior, and I walk faster than that, um, and, uh, people with disabilities walk slower. So they average it for traffic signal evaluation at three-and-a-half feet per second. At three-and-a-half feet per second, from that spot to that spot is about a two-and-a-half-minute walk, and we will keep those sidewalks clear. Um, each tenant, here's our operations plan, our parking allocation plan, because I think this is important for you to understand and know. Uh, each tenant, each of the 104 tenants that move in will get a space onsite, either on the surface or in the garage, first come, first served. And, uh, after the 120, 104 spaces are allocated, the 17 additional spaces will come, uh, of the 121 onsite, will come as a second space on a first-come, first-served basis. Some people may choose, "I don't want them," so that will leave a surplus onsite. Um, after that, after all those 121 spaces onsite were allocated, and that would give everybody at least one space onsite, any auxiliary demand would be in our auxiliary parking area. Um, I'll finish, uh, I'm sure there'll be questions, it's fine. Um, I just, I cited that the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the national standard that's used in the industry says that 1.15 spaces for a TOD, a transportation-oriented development, is what is required, 1.15. Your code calls for 1.25, not unreasonable. Um, I searched other areas. I live in Glenview. Um, we just finished a project with 1.18, right? Right 200 feet from the metro station like this, 1.18, no auxiliary parking, none, zero. Elmhurst, uh, completed a number of sites in their downtown. I did talk to them. Um, one that I cite specifically was 1.26 spaces per unit. Villa Park just completed one that I was involved in, uh, right at, at their metro station, at 1.28 spaces per dwelling. So your request, your code at 1.25, and your request at 1.30 are not outlandish, they're not unreasonable. But I will say, and I'll finish with this, that those auxiliary parking spaces are more than reasonable, given our allocation, that everybody will get one onsite. Everybody will get one. First come, first served, for the rest of them remaining onsite, and then we go to the auxiliary. So I think there's safeguards built into this, and I think, uh, given that, we have, I think we've right-sized parking. So I, by the way, um, having worked with Cindy on the downtown plan, um, I think this is going to be a tremendous benefit, uh, to your downtown, when you bring people. And that's why we're doing it in Glenview. That's why they're doing it in Villa Park. Uh, you have an asset there, your downtown. By the way, you have a nice historical downtown, which some communities would give their left arm for, and this will bolster that economic activity. So with that, unless there's questions now, it's up to you, Mr. Chairman, um, I will finish and complete.
Thank you. Any further presentation?
I'm finished with my presentation. Uh, I think we're done, right?
With that, we would end our formal presentation. Uh, I would ask for a time for rebuttal at the end of, uh, the, uh, presentation by the objector, uh, if that's within the realm of the board.
Okay. Um, I have a couple of questions. On your basement plan, it shows that there are two sump pumps, one on the, uh, northwest and one on the southeast corner of the building. Those are the only sump pumps, and how are they collecting the water? It's a pretty big building.
I, I must frankly admit, I have to yield to the architect on that one.
And we have, uh, two sump pumps. Well, one, it's on the, uh, east end at the far-right canned corner. We have one and one on the west end. Uh, and keep in mind, we haven't fully engineered the building yet, but tentatively, we have a, we have a sump pump there and there. The prime, this, there will be a, a storm drain at the bottom of the ramp, and that's why we have one directly adjacent to it, but we feel that the, uh, at least at this point, two sump pumps are going to be enough. Um, until our engineers get involved, there may be another one or two, but I think two is enough for now.
How large is the pump's going to be?
Can't answer that. They haven't been engineered yet, but those are, they're outside, and those are fairly large basins. They're not like residential-type of basins, these are commercial basins and pumps, um, but they have not been sized yet, so I, I can't answer that exact question. Apologize.
And where are they going to pump the water to?
It gets pumped into the, uh, these are storm water, um, so that, that goes into the storm system on the site. It doesn't just go to grade, it gets piped into the storm pipe and goes along with the rest of the, like, the downspouts for the building, um, which are collected on the interior, plus we also have downspouts, um, at each balcony. And all of that is, is connected on the outside of the building, and it goes into the storm sewer, and that goes down the street into the detention basin with all the other buildings in the, in this area.
On the east side of the building, you have an ejector pump. What is that pump co-, collecting, and where's it going to put it?
It's going to, there's an ejector pump. Um, so what we have is, we have, uh, floor drains running down the center, um, and we'll also have some other floor drains in the basement. Um, the ejector pump is for those floor drains. It's going to collect roughly in this area. Um, if you look on the engineering plan, the, uh, the- If you look on the engineering plan, the, the sanitary pipe is in the back of the building, so it'll all collect in the back and go out to the street sewer. All the store, all the sanitary from the upper floors will be going by gravity, and it'll be tied to the sanitary sewer going out the back of the building.
Okay. And then one question is, where are you going to pump or push the snow in the wintertime? You're going to push it up the driveway to go into the parking lot, and then where are you going to put it in the parking lot?
Yeah, it's all going to be removed, it's taken off-site, it's not going to remain here. We're not going to push it into the corner of the property and leave it there, and they'll bring trucks and they'll remove it, remove it from the site. That's part of their program.
Okay. Anyone on the plane, commission of question?
I'd like to wait until after public comment, please.
You can ask now if you want. You're going to wait then?
Until after public comment.
Okay. Would you also want to wait till after public hearing then?
Sure.
Okay, then at this time, we will open up to the public.
Thomas Newman. Okay.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Mary Jo Schulte, 267 East Railroad Avenue. I've never done this before, so, excuse me, but we have very limited parking, overnight parking. And I'm in the condo, we have, a lot of people have two spaces, I only have one, but my husband isn't allowed to drive, so that works out fine for us. But people that don't have two spaces park in the parking lot behind us, between the building and the shops over there. And what I fear is, you don't have enough parking for everybody to have two, and if you have two people and they don't have a place to park, they're all going to park in there, and then the businesses along there aren't going to have any room for their customers to park, because they're going to have overnight parking there from the apartment. I know they have some already from the condos, and they complain about that. And the bar that was there is no longer there, it's moved over, so you don't have to worry about night parking. But there is a couple restaurants. And if you're parking there overnight and you're not going to go out, the car's going to just stay there. And then introducing over 100 cars into the area down here is going to be a lot of traffic, unless the demographics, I don't know what the demographics are for your apartment building. The size of the apartments are very small. 1170 with one of the large corner apartments. I have a small condo, and mine's larger than that. And so are you just aiming at young people that are going to take the train downtown and work downtown in Chicago and come back? And then those people are going to have cars, and they're just going to leave them there all the time. And just have them when they want to go to the grocery store, or when they want to go see a friend, or whatever. So, yeah, it doesn't seem like it's going to be a lot, but if you're aiming at the younger people, or a small apartment, and they work downtown, they're going to want to travel when they come out here, if, if not just to get their groceries, to see their families or whatever. Otherwise, they would choose to live downtown. Although granted, it's cheaper to live out here and take the train. But there's all different kinds of situations, and I think that 104 apartments there is too many, you're going to have so many people around, it's just going to be like a nightmare. Yeah, I understand that it's a good thing, but I think that you could stand to take off at least 20 of those and make it not as large, and make it more amenable to everybody else that has to live downtown in the area. And we do have a nice downtown area. But when you add a bunch of that to it, then you've got all the traffic, and nobody's going to want to come down if they can't get anywhere because they can't park. And the parking at Metro, it's only after 11:00, you cannot park there overnight. So, yeah, after 11:00 in the morning, you can go park your car there. What are you going to do when it's time for the morning people, they come at 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning to take the train downtown? Your car's got to be gone. And are you going to get up at 4:00 o'clock in the morning and go take your car and find another parking spot so that it's not going to get towed away, or ticketed, or whatever they do at Metro? And right now, there's lots of empty spaces there, yes, but my daughter works downtown. Right now, she isn't going back to full-time downtown until September. So then, when the traffic picks back up, all those spaces are going to be filled.
Okay, thank you.
You know, it's just...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Jack Kennedy, 275 Railroad Avenue. My wife and Margie and I have lived in Bartlett for the past 43 years. In that time span, we've watched Bartlett grow from a tiny village to a sprawling suburb without losing its small-town charm and appeal. For the most part, expansion and development has been modest and in keeping with existing landscape. The proposed building is an attractive facade, however, at five stories, it's simply too tall and out of character with the surrounding neighborhood. Please limit this project to no more than four stories maximum height, as our current ordinance reads right now. That will also solve the inevitable parking deficiency. When there are four stories with 83 units, 121 parking spaces would be adequate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Mary Malosi, 271 Railroad. I've lived in Bartlett since 2004, when we moved to Bartlett Hills, and when it came time to downsize in 2017, we chose to stay in Bartlett, we bought our condo on railroad. We knew from the start that that empty lot wouldn't stay that way. As you've heard, we are mostly all concerned with the variances being requested, first the height of the building. I call your attention to the 2003 approved PUD plan for the land in question at page 60 of the packet prepared by the June 15th Committee of the Hull Meeting. The buildings approved in 2003 were each three stories, not four stories, and that is, you can see plainly on the plan, three-story buildings, all of them. If there's a fourth story on that building, I'll move there, I'd love to be on the top. The buildings, actually, the architect for the developer, as he stated today, saying that a five-story building is only one story higher than our neighboring building, false, all three buildings are three stories. The proposed building's height is out of character for our downtown, and certainly out of character with the existing Town Center buildings. With a total height of over 60 feet, including the parapets, it's much, actually, actually much closer to being a six-story building, and it will dwarf the surrounding buildings. The building's style and materials are out of character, the buildings in Bartlett Center are brick with classic roof lines, as are the Harris Bank, the Fifth Third Bank, CVS, Village Hall, and the train station. Even the newly-installed clock at the corner has a vintage, classic look. In contrast, the proposed apartments have a roofline of parapets and exhibit shiny aluminum throughout. Next, the parking. The original plans call for underground parking for the original 54 units on the plot in question, which would have resulted in a ratio of approximately 1.33. The proposed variance is 1.16, and I can tell you that parking at the existing properties is insufficient at 1.33. The belief that being located at the train will result in fewer cars being necessary has proven false. Just look at the full parking lots at the Bartlett Terrace Apartments on Hillcrest, they're packed in there. If Metro is servicing the population, why are our parking garages full and guest parking a challenge? I have a few questions for you. What is an impact donation which is being paid to the village upon approval? I've never heard of it, and I'm wondering how much is being donated to you? What are the occupancy limits to these buildings, to, I'm sorry, to these apartments? Who will enforce the occupancy and how? If units go unrented, will special incentives, that is lower-price rentals, be allowed? Our building has empty rental units at this time, so how confident is the petitioner that he will fill 104 units, and what studies have been done to verify? We welcome and look forward to the carefully-planned growth of Bartlett.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Robin Dubiel, and I live at 271 East Railroad Avenue. I'm here this evening to ask the board and commission not to allow a five-story, 104-unit building to be built with only 121 parking spaces. Most of the units in Bartlett Town Center Building, where I live currently, have two parking spaces inside the building. Even when only one person is occupying a unit with two spaces, they often use the second space for overnight family, guests, and friends. However, for a few people who have one parking space, but only, but have two or more cars in their household, they struggle with that situation. It's difficult, frustrating, and extremely inconvenient to jockey their car every morning and every evening, from the street parking to the Metro lot. And then you have to get up early in the morning to move your car at 6:00 in the morning, or attempting other alternatives have resulted in tickets or your car being towed. My observation is, most couples or families own more than one car. People are always on the go and own more than one car because they're headed in two different directions. Does your family own more than one car? If the residency at Bartlett Station gets a variation, gets their variation approved for 104 units with the 121 parking spaces, there will be 92 units with only one parking space, excluding five handicap parking spaces, reducing the number of available spaces. Also, please take into consideration, there is no allocation for guest parking. If the variation ratio for parking spaces is approved at 1.16, this is going to create a real problem for the tenants in the building, as well as the neighborhood as a whole. The Metro train is good for taking one to work or to another town, but it does not take a resident to all the locations they need to go, like the grocery store, clothes shopping, Walmart, doctor's visits, or the hospital. These are regular chores that people do. You and I all do those chores. I believe if the five-story, 104-unit is allowed to be built, it will be detrimental to the public welfare of the neighborhood and will not maintain the scale and the character of the village, specifically our downtown area. Because of the parking deficiency, I'm strongly asking the board and commission to hold this project to four stories, 83 units with 121 parking spaces. Thank you very much for...
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Bruce Dubiel, 271 East Railroad Avenue. I hope you all read the narrative in the petition that was signed by 55 residents or more, but I want to talk about the auxiliary spaces that are 525 feet away. I would think that even though the developer owns that shopping center, he would need a variation to take those spaces away from the shopping center. Shopping centers aren't normally built with extra parking spaces. I'd like to refer to Tim Doran's report on page four, he mentions three communities which have reduced parking ratios for TOD projects. I cannot speak about projects in Glenview and Villa Park, however, I do know something about Elmhurst. I was the building commissioner for the city of Elmhurst for the past 27 years, and I've just retired. The apartment at the Flynn, located at 183 North Addison, is located one block from the train station and has a parking ratio of 1.26. However, as one walks a half a block toward the train station, they'll encounter a public parking deck with 650 spaces, and the top level of the parking is free. As one gets to the train station on First Street, there's another public parking deck with 253 parking spaces. These are public parking decks, not Metro parking, but they can be used by commuters. The Metro parking is along the tracks, so very close to this building, there are 903 parking spaces for vehicles. In this regard, the TOD in Elmhurst is on opposite ends of the continuum with the proposed TOD in Bartlett. National standards, which Mr. Doran's report is based on, can be very misleading when it comes to parking. Transit-oriented design is not a one-size-fits-all. Every city and town, big and small, have their own unique attributes, assets, and nuances. A ratio of 1.26 is a minimum that easily works in a big city, but may not be adequate in smaller towns. Second, I'd like to mention some items in the analysis of the PUD prepared by William James of Camaros LTD. On page three, the top paragraph of the report states that the proposed development is similar in character to the existing character in downtown Bartlett. I would take issue with that statement. Look, this is a good-looking building, but it's, it's too tall. He provides a picture of 271 East Railroad Avenue and titles it "adjacent, three-and-a-half-to-four-story building." The 271 Railroad Avenue building has an in-ground parking garage and three stories above, so then in all fairness, by comparison, the proposed project is not a five-story building, but rather more accurately needs to be called a five-and-a-half-to-six-story building. When you look at our building, you see the garage overhead door and three stories above. When you look at the, is it the west elevation of the proposed project, you see a garage door with five stories above. While I'm looking at it from our property, I see a six-story building.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Can I just, I got about one more minute, please. On page four, the rendering's beautiful. By the way, I was a licensed architect in 1980, and I specialize in renderings, and there was some artistic license there in how it made our building look almost as tall as that. But on page four of the report, it states that the fifth floor is needed to make the project financially feasible. Folks, if I had a nickel, for every time I heard that statement from a developer during my tenure as building commissioner, I'd have quite a nickel collection. And when they didn't get approved for the additional story, they moved forward, built the project with one less level, and they made a profit, didn't make as much money, but it was a successful project. Finally, I found that most towns' residents are at the top of the organizational chart. We're the stakeholders, we're voters, our input should matter, we're not trying to stop this project, we simply want a project that will be a good fit for our community and something we can celebrate and embrace. Please hold this project to four stories. Thanks.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
I'm Russ Graziano, 271 East Railroad, and I'm the president of Bartlett Town Center Two Condo Association. First, let me say that the association is not opposed to development of the land in question, but does have grave concerns regarding the current proposal. We find a disconnect between the proposed building and the existing buildings and fear a major problem with the proposals... and fear a major problem with the proposals allotment of parking. We believe from experience that forecasting is an error. In building two, we have had owners sell their condos and move out, in part because of the parking situation. In fact, in soliciting the petition that we turned in, my neighbor informed me that they, he is going to sell his unit because his fiancee won't be able to park once they get married. It's, it's easily possible for a family to have a need for two or three cars in this day, day and age. And for those that don't own sufficient parking, there is no convenient alternative in, in or around downtown Bartlett, as you've heard from others this evening. There's a village ordinance that prevents overnight parking on all the streets, from what I understand. And there is no, the more distant, the more distant community parking lots don't allow overnight parking. So where does the overage go? And I'm sure there will be overage. And referring to the documents that we've reviewed in the development package, I'd like to correct the figure. The new planned construction, as we've heard, is 104 units, 121 parking spaces for a ratio of 1.17. I've read the documents provided that the Bartlett Town Center builders allowed 1.3 parking spaces per unit. But this isn't correct. In actuality, we have 1.416 spaces per unit. And if you add the visitor spaces to that count, we actually have 1.486. And unfortunately, that 1.486 per unit is still inadequate for our residents and our owners' needs. And as for the train being a mitigating factor, our building only houses one individual who commutes by train daily, meaning that the train does not necessarily lessen the need to provide parking. You can't live in downtown, in our downtown community without an available vehicle. While you can walk to a restaurant, you can't walk to a grocery. If you need eggs, bread, or milk without a car, you're out of luck. The bottom line is that the project requires more parking than is planned for, and it needs to be closer to two spaces per unit rather than one. We believe that granting the parking variation requested runs contrary to Bartlett's standard for variation, Section E1E, and that it would be detrimental to the public welfare, possibly injurious to other property and to improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Teri Danielello.
Name and address, please.
My name is Teri Danielello, and I've been an owner resident of building 271 East Railroad for six years. I realized when I bought my home that eventually something might be built on the vacant lot to the east of our building. I didn't know what would be built, but I put my trust in the Village of Bartlett to consider the impact any future building would have on the adjacent homeowners. The village puts considerable thought into its decision-making. We understand that variances are regularly requested and granted, but on this particular vacant site, the village has put in place specific requirements for development. These provisions are expected to be followed by potential developers. Members of the planning commission have changed over the years, and those who put the requirements in place may no longer be on the board. But the homeowners rely on the ordinances that have been put in place. It may be attractive for the village to consider variances requested by a developer, given the fact that it has been successful in other parts of the community. But consideration to existing homeowners should also be considered when granting the variances requested. We've put our trust in you to act as representatives for the Bartlett community, not just one entity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Janine Ames.
Name and address, please.
My name is Janine Ames. I live at 737 Candle Ridge Court, which is over in Hearthwood Farms. I am on the board of directors of Hearthwood Farms. I have some concerns about the size of this building and when we talk about stormwater. Even though they got the FEMA grant and they put in these detention ponds, we still flood. We still have units that flood. Now you're going to put up a 104-unit building. It's a beautiful building, it looks nice on the outside. But has anybody taken into consideration we're still flooding three, four blocks down the street, even though that's where the detention pond is? So take that into consideration when you, the size of this building and where that water is going to go. I do want to comment on the parking. We have 328 units in Hearthwood Farms. Every unit has two parking spaces, one in the garage, one on the apron of the garage, of their driveway. There are additional, where some have maybe three parking in their driveway. We have an additional, to the 656 parking space, an additional 105-plus overflow and visitor parking. I challenge you to go over to my streets any night of the week, year-round, and you will find cars parked on the street. Everybody owns two or three cars, or they have three adults living in a two-bedroom apartment, each have their own car. I'd be willing to bet everybody here has two cars. So when you're talking about 121 parking spaces for 104 units, those numbers don't match. Even if you put 17 in the parking lot by the grocery store, it doesn't work. They're not going to do it. Who's going to get up in the middle of the night and move their cars? And I'm going to tell you, if I'm paying for a parking space in the commuter lot and I show up and somebody's in my parking space, I'm going to raise holy hell. You know, you're giving it to them for free, but I have to pay for it? Wait a minute, something's wrong. So I just think it needs to reduce the size of the building, make it where people can actually live there and not have to worry about squeezing into that little parking space that's next to the road. And I know somebody already mentioned there is an overnight ordinance in parking. So parking along Gertow isn't going to work. Have you seen the number of cars that line up when the trains come through? How about when the freight trains come through? Now add anywhere from 100, I'm guessing 150 extra cars trying to get home. I just think it's going to be a real crowded downtown. And I like Little Bartlett. Nice quaint village. I like the improvements that are being made. This building's too huge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Emily Solis.
Name and address, please.
Emily Solis, 271 East Railroad Avenue. I'm going to talk professionally and also as a resident of Bartlett. As a resident of Bartlett, when I found out that this building was going to be built, I honestly decided to want to move. I did look, started to look for places to move. This is the reason why. I used to live in Addison, the same type of building that is being built. Couldn't sleep, loud noises, police was called multiple times. And then once I did move, I moved into Bartlett and fell in love for the peace and quiet that we have in this town. Like I said, well, once I found out we were building this 140-unit place, I decided I wanted to move. I am currently looking for a place to move because this will be built. Professionally, I am a mental health clinician for DuPage County Health Department. We do do counseling at the home, and mostly where I go are apartment buildings. One of the most difficult things I have to do is find a parking, especially at this type of unit. There isn't a parking for me. We do emergency calls, meaning we could go out as late as 12, 1 o'clock in the morning. So I could just see myself as a woman finding a parking spot at the metro or even further down, the safety concern that I would have to go into a building like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hector Solis.
Name and address, please.
Hector Solis, I live in 271 East Railroad. I currently own one spot, parking spot underground. And obviously, that's for my wife, because she's the boss. And I have to park on the metro overnight. So when winter comes, obviously, oh, there's no trucks. They start doing their work. And obviously, what, what they don't want is seeing cars all over the place because they cannot do their job. They get frustrated. It's been quite a few times when they stop and tell me like, "Thank you so much." Because I, what I do, I wake up an hour, hour and a half, two hours early to move my car so they can do their job, so they can keep all the spots clean for the people that really used to go downtown, the ones that pay. That's how you guys, you know, get some money for it. So that's one thing. And not only if you don't move your car, you're not only messing up one spot, you're messing up like two, two spots. And what happens with that? They get icy and people can walk, cars cannot get out, all that kind of stuff. It's frustrating. Another thing, since I live in this place, I only have, like I said, one parking spot. When I buy the groceries that I have in my car, I have to go inside because I don't want to walk when it's like super hot or when it's like super cold with so many bags on me carrying it, you know, to go into my place. So what I do, I go underground and where the parking spot is to unload my stuff or to pick up my wife. It's been so many times where I get calls or emails that, "Oh, you're blocking spots, you're blocking this, you're blocking that." So it's super, super frustrating that you cannot, even though you live in that place, that you're not allowed to go inside. They even need to think about having extra spaces for people that are going to do that stuff because it's going to happen. Nobody wants to walk, especially that far. So even the other day, not too long ago, I got in there, got out from work, extremely, extremely tough day. So I go in there, and then I start hearing people telling me, "Hey, you cannot park there, you're blocking, you're all this and do that." I tried to ignore it, you know, for a good, good while, time. So what happened? I had, like I said, a tough day. I got out of my car, I raised my voice to this person, and thank God he didn't follow me because that would be a death. That would go far and beyond. And these days, everybody has a gun. So if we were to go far and beyond, you know, things can go super, super wrong. So on my perspective, I mean, they need to check all these things because it's extremely, extremely headaches to, you know, not have a spot. And normally, the whole parking spot is full normally. Obviously, right now, because of the pandemic or whatever, it's a little empty. But obviously, that space has to be cleaned for the snow trucks to clean and do their job the way it's supposed to and keep it clean for everybody else.
Okay, thank you.
Jay Langfelder.
Name and address, please.
Yes, Jay Langfelder, 415 South Hickory, Bartlett, Illinois. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the boards. I wish to address concerns about the parking area. Right now, I'm holding up Village Bartlett Committee minutes from January 10th, 2021. And this is a building and zoning concept of a pocket reserve concept plan review. And this review, plan is off of Naperville Road, okay? This one has 15 acres, a proposal of 15 acres. And the one we're addressing tonight has 1.873 acres. For, for unit-wise, you're talking about 104 units being proposed tonight. This one, the pocket reserve concept plan, is 146 apartments, 146 apartments on 15 acres, all right? Then you move to parking lots, parking spaces for vehicles. They are projecting at the pocket reserve concept plan review, 309 spaces, 309 parking spaces. Tonight is only 121 parking spaces. So in front of the board, the only picture I have, if you close your eyes, you're taking 20 pounds of flour into a five-pound bag. And that's what you're doing. I love Bartlett, been here for almost 23 years, been very active in the community. And one thing, ladies and gentlemen of the board, we have ordinance to protect the community and the community's safety. And this is a catastrophe. You're talking about a five-story from a four-story. And you're talking about, I haven't even touched base on the flooding issues of the requirements of the sump pump. So the concerns I have is the capacity of the building and then also the parking spaces. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Melinda Bowring. That's the last one that I have.
That's the last one? Anyone else in the audience have a comment, question? I'll close this portion after public. Anyone on the planning commission have any questions for the petitioner?
Go for it. Well, clearly, parking is a big issue. And obviously, you've heard all the public comments tonight regarding the parking. I think the, I, I think the presentation on the parking was, it was a great presentation. However, what I've always said, and one of my biggest things, is a park is parking in this. And I read any type of development that comes in, it's always the first question I ask, is always talking about parking. And I think our village ordinance is not correct and needs to be. We need to have more parking for, for developments. And I always point to the Savery area, there's not enough parking. Clearly, Town Center, there's not, not enough parking there. Obviously, there was a, there was a study done for that and it said it was adequate, and that was incorrect. I guess my question is, is, is there a way to eliminate units to have, so you can have adequate parking for this? I think onsite parking is the important part. Offsite is nice for some type of overflow, but you're going to have, at the price point that these are setting, these are going to be price points for people from age 23, 24 to 35. To be realistic, these people, you know, that, that demographic is, it's the first time they, they got to move out and they got to find a place to go, and they want to stay close to home. And they're going there, and they're going to move in with, and if it's a one-bedroom, they're moving in with their girlfriend or boyfriend. And so you're going to have two vehicles there. Two bedrooms, you're going to have two to three vehicles for that. So I guess my question is, again, is there a way to reduce the size of this building to accommodate the number of parkings, the actual number of cars that are going to be there? Who wants the answer?
Right at the four stories, that's what you need to do.
I wonder if people could, could answer that? I guess one rebuttal to your, your statement was that, that I would have is that the, the village has a plan for the Town Center. It has standards for the Town Center. We're asking for a nine-space deviation from that to be compensated for by 16 or more auxiliary spaces on property under the same ownership. I, I, I do beg to differ with you that you're going to have people with two and three cars living here. I appreciate the concern for parking, but you're talking about the inconvenience of people who will live on the site. We're not talking about impacting other people on other properties, okay? If someone has to get up at 6 o'clock in the morning to move their car, if that's what they choose to do, if that's the arrangement that they choose to live in, then they've chosen that, okay? I think people will self-select, and if they have two or three cars, they're not going to live here. They're going to live where they have 15 acres and an abundance of parking. If you want an abundance of parking, you're not going to get a quality Town Center because you're going to have a lot of parking, you're not going to have any synergy, you're not going to have a, a walking pedestrian environment. And so I, I think, I, I think all the concern about parking is really subterfuge for not wanting perhaps a five-story building. We're asking for one story in excess of the standard. We're not asking for any variances here because we're in the downtown overlay district, and deviations would be major design exceptions, which have a different criteria for them, which- which I've addressed in my report. And in terms of reducing the number of units, you know, I can defer to the ownership, but I'm pretty sure the answer to that is no. They want you to respond to the proposal as it is. And we cannot, they cannot reduce the number of, of units to exceed the amount of parking that would be required by, by your ordinance. So I, I think that is where our team stands on.
Thank you. Let me move on to our next question. Is there been any sound studies done? Clearly, the people inside these units probably won't hear the train. My concern is everybody on the north side of town. Now you have a train rolling through and all those vibrations and everything like that are gonna bounce off this building and head north. Was there any study done in that regard? No.
Traffic design study?
No, it would be a sound study.
Acoustical, an acoustical study, okay? I mean, there aren't any standards in your ordinance for acoustical vibrations or impact across the railroad tracks. I mean, you're gonna have some reverberation of sound from the buildings that are there now. So we're gonna be one story taller than the buildings to the west of us. And I, the answer is no, we haven't done this question.
Okay, thank you. Let's, I know, I'm sure, I'm just gonna jump to a couple. I know other commissioners are gonna ask probably similar questions. Stormwater runoff. Can, and again, it might not be as a big deal, but I know there is issues with stormwater runoff. Can, can somebody speak a little bit more in depth to where the retention pond is? Just so everybody's on the same page? How big the pipes are? How much water is expected to, to runoff as well?
My name is Azam Hamdan, engineer for 30 years so far. Construction, design, layout, lot of surveys, name it. Since I started this job and the first meeting we had with the village, we talked about the detention. The first abroad is the detention. And it appeared like their detention has already been designed and approved by MWRD and the village. Therefore, we're certain that they don't have the copy of the permit. But finally, we got the permit copy and can see how thick is. Last Monday, went through it. And it looks like on the, when they start up, I'm sorry, I've never done this before, but I'm trying to draw myself. Asburg Place Development, when he built this development, it was 16.52 acres. And then the detention requirement was over 4.06 acre per foot. And then the detention provided is 15.48, which means three times more than needed. There is no way that side of 1.855 will not handle the detention that exists right now. That's my answer.
Do you know where that stormwater runs to? Or maybe that's a question for.
Yeah, the whole storm goes to the one structure on the south, on the northwest corner. There's a big structure connected to the 30 inches and the change, 18 inches changed to 30 inches on railroad going east. It dumped on.
The corner of Prospect and.
Yes, Prospect and railroad at the northeast, west corner.
Okay.
And they're restricted also. They, they put a restrictive four inches. I mean, there is no way that side for that, that size will override or flow somewhere else. And I did ran a model that called XBSWMM. This, this model is the best model in United States. And it's proved all my water levels, it's below my room, the proposed and the existing. And it was provided the first time and I'm doing it again because of the, the new data I got from the RDI. So it will be a little slight different, but it's not gonna change the, the result.
Thank you. I'll yield the rest of my questions for some other commissioners.
Mark?
Okay, I have some questions. Questions for Mr. Pekarsky, please, about ownership. Is the intent of the developer to own or to develop it and then fill it and sell it? Or to own it and hold it and manage it?
My client's intent is to own, build, own and keep the property. They're keepers. They have 10 other properties that they also own and keep. This will be rental and obviously they're investing or asking you to allow them to invest $15 million in this site. So they intend to keep it in tip top shape.
Question for Mr. Haylock. Besides the height issue and the parking issue, which I'm still chewing over, there's this corner that both you and Mr. James talked about. And that I can't get past. And that is the, yeah, that's the one. And, you know, that is basically, I believe, and maybe you can answer, the relationship between the first floor and the existing public sidewalk in terms of elevation is what?
Floor to floor. I mean, it's roughly, it can't be more than two feet.
Yeah. So then you've got a window sill for the bedroom at what height?
About three feet.
Three feet?
Roughly, yes.
And that's a master bedroom right there.
That is, that's not correct. The master bedrooms are on the, in here. These are secondary bedrooms.
It's a bedroom.
It is a bedroom, yes.
Okay, we got a bedroom. And in that bedroom, we got a window wall there that's looking east towards Berto.
Right, we have a window here.
That window is just right there, right there at the sidewalk with a nice intimate relationship with every person that drives by and every person that walks by. What's the distance between that guy's window and the public sidewalk? And we know it's five foot to the property.
Right now, it's 10 feet, 10 inches if you measure it to the existing sidewalk.
It's 10 feet, 10 inches. So, and that is street level, basically.
Roughly, yes.
You know, when we go over to the existing town center building, you know, some of those portions of those facades are about 10 feet away.
Very similar, yeah.
Most of them bounce back further. But they're, as you said, they're elevated about four feet. And that makes a huge difference in terms of the separation. Here, these people that are along Berto are gonna have windows that look right out onto that public sidewalk. And they're gonna be right there. And it's, it's a huge difference. And I don't think it can be, it can be compared. Why can't this building be pushed west? You started talking about the radiuses.
Well, if, if we push to west, you know, maybe we can push it a couple of feet. It's, a lot of it has to do with this. We've got, we have to have a setback, or we did provide a setback, of green space between. Let me just double check this before I speak, as I don't want to make a mistake. Yeah, we, we provided a, a green space buffer between the new walkway, the pedestrian walkway and this driveway. We wanted to provide a buffer there. Obviously, that could be reduced a little bit. I believe we have roughly a six foot buffer. And then when we come around the garage, we want, we go into the basement. It's tough enough negotiating a slope. But when you add a curve to it, you know, it's even more difficult to negotiate. So we want to provide a nice radius for them to turn in there.
So is, did you mention a heated ramp?
Yes, it is.
What's the percentage of the slope at the ramp?
Can't be sure, but I believe it's about 8%. Roughly about what it is? The slope of the ramp? 8%.
8% and it's heated. You know, that radius is very generous there. You're making a nice soft turn for them to get in. But then the building, if it has to be as long as it is, is paying the price at Berto to the point where we're 10 foot, 10 inches and that's to a carriage walk. That's not even to the property line where the sidewalk normally is. And then there's a parkway. So we've got people that are basically hard to the corner. Take a look back at the rendering. Can you click back to that, Roberta?
May I ask a question? Is this a concern of safety for the residents or?
It's a concern for privacy. When you first look at this building and say, oh, that's retail on the first floor. Because it's kissing up to the, it's kissing up to the, close to the sidewalks and the, and the street. See? And then all of a sudden, we've got this proximity and we've got this conflict between the public just a few feet away from, from bedroom. That doesn't happen anywhere else in this village, right? Town center, the town center, we've got that, the first floor is elevated half a floor, right? So the separation helps. And most of those facades are further back than what we have at, in this case on Berto.
A couple of things. One, we've offered a lot of different choices to the homeowners here. Obviously, this, a person that likes to live in a private home like myself isn't gonna be comfortable living in an apartment building. It's just a style of living. The style of living for a person living on the first floor with a first floor patio, that's gonna be a different person than maybe the person that's living on the second floor or the top floor. We only have two units that are facing that particular street. And that street, even though it is close to the sidewalk, it's much more of a quiet street versus, neither one of them are particularly heavily traveled. They're not really busy. But I, I feel it's just a matter of choices. This person in this apartment is gonna have to choose to live there. And if, in my opinion, if he doesn't comfortable with the proximity, they're not gonna rent there. If it becomes a problem eventually, hey, we can't rent this because there's, they're too close. And there's a couple of options. That particular window that we're talking about isn't a requirement in that particular unit. We could close it off from the inside so that person has, doesn't have the issue, but it still looks the same on the outside. The other thing is, you know, if they wanted it, at some point, they could put a fence or, or taller landscaping. This is just a suggestion of the landscaping here. It hasn't been, you know, it's not mature and grown up yet. But we could plant, more plantings around that person's window to get more privacy. It's just one unit or two units. While there, everybody on this first floor is gonna be at the lower level. That's just a matter of choice. And we're trying to keep the building height down. Obviously, we could rate, we could have raised the building up four feet, but then we didn't want to increase the feet, the height even higher. And we're trying to minimize the height of the building as much as we could.
It's just, I'm looking at and trying to find a way to reconcile myself to this just in terms of a, of a good site design, you know? We're not here, the Plan Commission isn't here to vote on variances of the setbacks. But just to address the height of the building, this is not a slightly higher to slightly lower differential between the heights of the town center and this thing. There's, there's no tways about it. This is a five story building, full five stories, hard five stories to the corner of Berto and real. Right, not like the town center, it's three and a half stories tall to the eve, right? This is not six and a half feet taller than that building in perception. Because the wall to the street is three and a half stories. So let's just not paint a picture. That's what it is. And they say, is that okay? And it's, oh my gosh. And then it's, it's so aggressive on the site. It's not allowing us to have even the de minimis parking that's required by our ordinance. And it's pressing itself against the street in kind of an abnormal way. If that first floor was retail, we could kind of understand that. I'm not pushing for that. I don't think that's realistic in this site. I'm saying that that thing is, is set way too close to, to Berto for the use that it is. Even if that was a town home, we'd have the face of the building back 15 feet if the front doors were on, on the, were on that, were on that street. It's just, we've, we've got too much building and not enough site going on here. And I can start to reconcile myself to the, to the, to the height if it was handled differently. But the mass of the building is just too much for what we have. In terms of the parking, there is a case to be made that rental parking is self-regulating. And that if you don't provide enough, you won't be able to keep it leased up. But as Mr. DeBeal said, you know, it's kind of conditional whether that de minimis parking that we had is appropriate for this particular site according to what the surrounding neighborhoods are able to absorb or not absorb and when, as a couple of the commentators said. If we can't do overnight parking, well, then how do we accommodate additional guests? Are the tenants in this building gonna walk 500 feet down to the retail center? Or are they gonna walk 500 feet down and then park in the town center's retail lot there? Maybe they could be trained to do, to do the right thing. The 1.2 that Mr. Dorn commented on in Villa Park in Elmhurst, I think Mr. DeBeal commented on the Elmhurst, but it was 1.2 plus for both of those examples. Not counting the Glenview one, which I'm not aware of. I think I know the other, the other two. Without some other mechanism to absorb and buffer the additional parking demand, it's hard not to think traffic isn't gonna, that this is not going to impact on neighboring, on neighboring properties. So there, said my piece, I just could start to reconcile myself to the height. And, and if a case could be made for the parking to, to get close to, to our ratio or hit our ratio, then I think I'd be good with it. But it's just too tight to Berto.
If I, if, that's okay. If I could, I'd like to, staff has been working on that issue. And we have looked at providing overnight free parking, 24 hours, 365 on Berto on the east side. We've put together a plan for 23 parking spaces. These could be utilized by anyone. We are hearing that the condo owners are short of parking. If they have guests, they could park here. If the apartment people need parking, they could park here. If you take these 23 spaces and the 16 spaces down at the shopping center, I put those in a chart. I'm showing the 121, I'm showing the requirement of 130. Mr. Dorn mentioned the 137 parking stalls, which is from the 16 added to the shopping center, gets you to 1.31. If you take, I took not quite half, but a little bit more than half. If you take the onsite parking of 121 and you add the 16 to the shopping center, auxiliary parking stalls, and then you take just 14 of the 23 on Berto, you are now at 151 parking spaces available, which brings you up to 1.45 spaces per unit. And if they utilized all 23 of the on-street parking on Berto, you would have a total of 160 and be at 1.53. Just to clarify for the condo buildings, the existing, actually, buildings one and two, and I'm, I'm allowing for a little bit of flexibility here because the plans are old and they have added existing guest parking spaces. But buildings one and two were granted a 1.45. But, um, buildings one and two, um, were granted a 1.45, uh, spaces per unit. It was amended for building three, and building three was built with 1.30 spaces per unit. So, I just want to put this in perspective with where that would fall within the chart. In addition to that, staff is also working on overnight parking 24 hours at the metro station.
Could you show that on the, uh?
So, we are looking at possibly, yes, it's on the north side of the tracks. This area here. This area here is underutilized. There is very rarely any parking, um, over this area. In Geneva, in Barrington, in other cities, their 24-hour overnight parking is quite a distance from the train station for a reason. Because people are willing to walk farther if they're leaving their car there for days. And yes, during the week, it would be, there would be a fee. That's what we're looking at. However, on holidays, after 11:00 a.m., aft, on, um, weekends, it would be free.
Could you go back to your chart, please?
Sure.
Thank you. So, with those 14 that you're counting, half of those contemplated cars on Bertow, what would the usage rules be for those overnight?
Overnight, 24-hour, on-street.
Okay, somebody leaves their car there for nine days?
Okay. What's the problem?
Are you widening Bertow for this?
No.
So, the reason why we can't do overnight parking on a regular street is because it's safety concerns, but we're going to allow it here.
This street is a low-traffic-generating street, um, and it has. And, and there are, as Mr. Dorn stated, there are quite a few turn lanes on this street. There's striping on this street. I think it's visible. On this plan, you can kind of see it. It's fairly wide in the areas. We only put it in the areas where we felt that the pavement width was adequate. We took it out across from Hillcrest, across from that curb cut, and then we added more spaces here. It does narrow up here. We didn't add spaces down here.
Yeah.
Um, it's wider on this end as well.
I'm looking at a, a Google map of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you can see that there's striping. It's difficult to see here, but there is a striped median right here.
Correct, yeah. So, that would be removed?
Yes, it is.
Charge.
That striping would be removed on it and on?
We would, we would, we're looking at it. We would restripe it, yes. We have not engineered it. It's something that staff is, is taking a, a hard look at, and it's something that we are hearing what the residents are saying, and we would like to provide this to them.
So, if we got past all other issues except for this and said, well, village to the rescue, you know, those cars seem to make sense for this site, um, that would be conditional then to any approval, right? Well, at least that's what I would say if we got that far.
You could, yes.
Okay.
The area that's, uh, the southeast corner there of Bertow and Railroad, that open area? Yes, right there. What's to prevent the village from building a parking lot there?
That property is owned by Metro.
Dang.
Wow.
Wow.
It's quite Metro.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question that no one brought up. What about during the winter? What about snow removal?
That's still under discussion. So, we, we don't, we, we don't know if we would allow cars- We don't know if we would allow cars just to stay there. We would plow the street as normal. Or if after a two-inch snowfall, we would require people to move their cars. That hasn't been decided at this time.
Hasn't been decided.
That could make it difficult for people who think they have a legitimate parking space. And if you get some snow, you're suddenly out of luck. We live in a snow country, not, not-
We, the cars could remain. They do it in many places. They just plow the street.
I definitely applaud staff for looking into the parking and finding all of those things. Because, I mean, those are, those are big things. I, I know for me, I think it's definitely upon the, the developer to figure out how to get adequate parking for their site. But I do appreciate the staff finding all of these other solutions because there's, there are solutions there, and we, they may be, need to be utilized in the future. So, I'm glad those options were presented.
Anyone else have a question, comment on the Plan Commissioner? Jerry?
John?
No.
Anyone on the ZVA?
When I saw this plan first proposed, I was excited because it was an area that I have longed for to see it be developed. And then as I started to look at it, I asked myself a lot of questions. One of them was, wow, this is a lot of building on not that much lot. And then, one of my favorite questions all the time is, what about parking? I understand what the TOD is trying to accomplish. But when I looked at this and I first saw 104 units, my first thought was to take 52 units or 52 additional parking spaces because, let's say, half of the 104 are going to have two cars. That's 156 parking spaces. And two-bedroom apartments, two cars, maybe three. The one-bedrooms, one, maybe two. The studios, probably only one. But I just, I don't, I don't agree with the fact that you, you think that there's going to be that low a requirement for parking. Even if you take the train downtown and you're a couple, let's say, that you're likely to have two vehicles. And there's just not enough parking here, whether it be inside or outside. And then I look at the alternative parking down at the shopping center, and I'm thinking, wow, if I was facing that, I would never buy there, or I'd never rent there. Then, there's the issue of Metro across the street. Well, right now, today, the issue is that you can't park there overnight. Yes, maybe something would change in the future, but we can't count on that. That's the future. Metro may or may not sell it, allow us to do it, whatever. The Metro parking might be convenient for guests, but I don't think, as it exists today, is convenient for residents. So, I have a big problem with parking in general here.
I have a question about the 16 auxiliary spots. So, is that firmed up and part of the plan? In, in the traffic study or in the parking study, it's referenced, it's referenced several places. But I guess my question to staff or to the petitioner is, will that be, um, part of the formal plan? Will that, what happens if the petitioner sells the shopping center? And, I mean, is that, is there a covenant that the new owner has to abide by? That 16 spots being available to the apartment building?
It would, it would be part of the new plan development ordinance. So, yes, it is a formal part of the proposal, and it would be binding. And it would not be the, the, the potential for, uh, that auxiliary parking to be separated and unavailable from the apartment development.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, um, I don't know Commissioner, I don't know what your name is, but I, I think you hit the nail on the head. Um, please remember two things. First of all, if I may recite this. So, the shopping center, the same owner, to the south, where we're putting in the auxiliary parking, has 535 spaces. They are required by code to have 423. So, they are way overparked, overparked, yes, way overparked. They have more parking than they need, number one. Number two, as, as Mr. James just said, as part of the ordinance, um, we would include the 16 spaces. We can go beyond 16. Those are just 16 on an east-west axis at the far north end of the property. There are other spaces there that are available anytime. So, those things and a security system would be employed at that point, too. Those things that would watch those cars at night. The, the employment of those spaces, 16 plus more if needed, if that on-street parking, there would be plentiful parking. And the final thing I'll say, and I, and I don't mean to be glib about this nor disrespectful. Went through this in my community. I was chairman of the Plan Commission, too. Either buy in to the concept of TOD or you don't. Either buy into it or you don't. And in a town center like this, this will be market-driven. And the people that move in there won't have three cars. I guarantee it. I've seen it. They won't have three cars. They won't have, the people that shop there that want to buy, excuse me, and they want to rent there, this is rental, well, it'll be market-driven, and they will, with people that will seek out because of that because they can't afford a second car. That's the experience of national data. And I heard, um, what Mr. DeBeal said about, uh, one-size-fits-all. It's not. Very specific standards are for this that specify suburban TOD sites within a half suburban TOD sites within a half mile of a train station. So, those are pretty accurate figures that are widely used in the, in the industry. And it wouldn't be to the benefit of the owner to build this, construct it, invest that kind of money with parking if it wasn't market-driven for those types of people that don't want to own cars. So, you have to kind of buy into that concept.
Just by way of information, uh, we can restrict, uh, the off-site parking, the auxiliary parking, uh, via a restrictive covenant uh, or, uh, in, in some way or another so that there will be a permanent easement, uh, as to the number of parking spaces that we ultimately settle on. Uh, and that easement will run from the current owner and be, uh, run with the land uh, so that it would be, uh, incumbent upon any future purchasers. And of course, it would run to the, uh, ownership of the, uh, of, of the proposed, uh, project.
I'd just like to remind everyone that this meeting will conclude at 10:00 p.m. Any other questions or comments from anyone?
I think several people have brought up valid points. Uh, Jay Langfelder did on comparing two places with parking. Uh, Roberta brings up a very good point about the village with Bertow Avenue. When you look at Bertow Avenue from Devon to Railroad Avenue, on the east side of the road, you have Flexonics, and then you have Metro owning that other property, which is not likely anytime soon to be developed into something that's going to generate more traffic. They probably had it with the intent of parking or something like that. It certainly wouldn't be another railroad station. And, um, when Town Center was first proposed, there were a lot of people that were shocked at the height of the building, and they complained about the height for that also. And even before that, probably 40 years ago, when the telephone company added a second story, that was a shocker in its day. As we move out from the Town Center, I think it would be natural to see, uh, something this height that is only going to be about six feet higher than the roof line of the development to the west. When you look at the map, north of the tracks, there's not anything there, uh, on which this would intrude. So, it's an isolated area as far as height. The parking, uh, I was a little squeamish about that, too. But I think with what the village is proposing, we pretty much are overcoming it. When you look at the square footage of the units, it's not going to attract, attract large families. And why would you rent a high-end apartment where you knew ahead of time you wouldn't have enough parking place? Uh, that wouldn't make sense. You're, you're going to have a higher caliber of people that are going to do some planning. And since it's a rental unit, it's not like they're making a 30-year mortgage investment in a property, and they think, what are we going to do now? When their lease is up, uh, they could look somewhere else if parking is their issue.
I know the petitioner has, uh, you said 12 properties. Are the, they're all shopping centers? Or are there also residential condo or apartment buildings?
There's one, one residential. And I'm just going to ask this retail.
And does that residential compare at all to the size or scope of this?
And a lot of you, a lot of you there have similar situation to the downtown parking situation that people tend to, and it's right next to the, there's a, there's a, so people tend not to own cars and use the, uh, use the train station as new transportation.
I think if we look at the track record of the petitioner and what he has done with that shopping center that was even being considered being bulldozed at one point, he has a very good track record of what he can do. And, uh, I think this, the beauty of this building with two fronts, not even something that has a, a back look, is phenomenal. We don't have a lot of that going on in Bartlett right now. And I think this would be an asset and a, and a good thing to get on the tax rolls for the Village of Bartlett.
My, my concern with the parking is that, and as it was stated, people who decide to rent here, it's their option. I mean, they'll know what they're getting into. And I can't believe the petitioner is going to spend $15 million and believe he's going to be turning tenants away because, because there's a parking problem. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. And I'm looking at the shopping center. He's not that kind of businessman. My concern is that it doesn't affect residents of the Town Center. I mean, they have their parking, and they have their overflow parking. Some park, um, to the immediate west of their building. That property, and I know there's signs now across the street for the retail, that it's meant only for retail. So, is, how could the village help in ensuring that, that other, um, surface parking for the retail or for the condos isn't used by the residents of the apartment buildings?
The property owner currently takes care of that now. They monitor that. And we, the village does hear about that sometimes.
The, that parking on the street, I mean, is that, what? It's, it sounds like it's, in its infancy, infancy. What's, I mean, it has a big bearing in my mind on the parking issue. If, if it's, if the off-site auxiliary parking is part of the ordinance and locked in that it's going to be there and it's, it's, it can be used. Whether people want to use it or not, it's, you know, the management to convince them, you know, that's what they're going to have to do or to park across the street in the metro lot. But what's the likelihood, do you think, of the Bertow street parking happening? Because it has a bearing, at least in my mind, on, on what I would do, how I would hold.
I think the chances are very good.
Because those numbers you showed make a big difference. You know, 1.5, 1.45, 1.5. You know, 1.5, 1.45, 1.5 compared to... Certainly, I mean, the 1.16 doesn't, isn't applicable if the 16 parking spaces, the auxiliary spaces at the shopping center are part of the project. So that brings it to 1.31. And now you've got 1.45 and 1.53 as other possible, you know... That makes a huge difference.
I think it makes a huge difference, too. That was a turning point for me. I've sat on this board for 42 years, and I've never seen the village be so proactive in trying to resolve this issue. We want the Town Center to improve and grow and get more people there and more restaurants and shopping and everything else. And I think this would be a big asset.
I had one question. When they were talking about that, there's the 16 spots at the shopping center and possibly, you know, and more. How many more would you be talking about? I'm not familiar with what's available there.
At least there are 16.
Okay.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, to Star Lane. Right just south of that 16 parking spots is, and next to the Montessori School, there is a space that I can put 32 additional parking spots, and that'd still be within the 550 to 600 feet away from the building.
Okay, so that's significant. Thanks.
And just in regards to the ownership of the two properties, as we do this, you know, auxiliary agreement, we record an easement, a permanent easement. Even if we sell the shopping center in the future, the new owners will have to honor the easement.
Okay, thanks.
Roberta, would that be like a covenant on the property type of thing?
Yes. It's the same exact thing, yes.
Okay, we have about five minutes left. Any final questions, comments from anyone?
Parking on Bertow, anybody's going to be able to park there on Bertow, then?
Anyone, yes.
It'll be...
The condo owners can park there, guests can park there.
I can park there.
You could park there.
That'll be 24 hours, correct?
24 hours is what we're proposing, yes.
You're not talking about any kind of permit parking there?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Permit parking for the...
At this time, no. I'm not saying that might not happen in the future. We currently do have one street that has permit parking. We had quite a few people up north of the tracks in the multifamily units that needed more parking. They kept getting tickets on Prospect, they needed more parking. So the village granted permit parking on one side of the street, just north of here. That's the only place that I know of in the village. And at this time, this proposal is not doing that.
Is there a way to get an increased setback on Bertow? Is there something you can do with the site plan and the layout to get that to about 15 feet?
Fifty, go from five to 15? Yeah.
There's actually a built-to line on the...
There's a built-to line, there's a built-to line, and then there's good design.
To a maximum of 15 feet.
I hear you.
I'm asking for an exception to go to 22 feet because we extend beyond that built-to line.
Is there a way to withdraw that building further away from Bertow? And not just...
Not much. We could probably pick up a couple of feet. We've moved this building like 10 times over the last year. We've changed the parking at least that many times to try to improve it. It looks like there's a lot of room on the west side, but it's really tight.
Without that commitment, I just can't, I just can't do it. You know, we get past the parking and grit your teeth on the height, but that one just kills it for me. I just can't imagine walking by and driving by that condition.
Well, there isn't 15 feet for sure. There's probably a few feet.
Huge radius at the bottom of the driveway, and you're doing it for two overhead doors. Can you do one overhead door, like a lot of folks do, and then make it, it's a tighter turn and not a complete 90 to get in? And one person uses the door at a time, using 18-foot door, 19?
That's what we're using now. I mean, it's not a one-car. We need two-way, we need two-way traffic because inevitably the person's going to be in the middle, you know?
You wouldn't be the first one to do it. And you're being beautifully generous on the west side, and then you're pinching the east side to the point where I think it's dysfunctional. I'm going to be a no.
Sorry, we can't commit to 15 feet. It's just too much. Right, that's true.
7.5 is fine if the building is designed appropriately for that 7.5. You've got a bedroom window there. Show me another place in the Village of Bartlett where you got a bedroom window that close to a property line.
It's really difficult to argue against your own standards. You don't believe in the standard parking ratio and the building line that you have in your ordinance here. I mean, it's really hard to kind of perform a consent or an urban-type development, which is what you're doing.
And we have a form-based design here, which is a performance-based design. We've gone to it with our overlay district specifically so that we have the latitude to be able to say yes to a good design, right? In my mind, I think we have to say no to a bad portion of the design. And the building is nice, okay? The building materials are wonderful, right? Your design is good. You know, you can't complain about that. There's just, it's just too bloody close to Bertow.
But you're looking at one bedroom in one unit out of 104. And when this building is built, nobody is forcing somebody to rent that unit.
Why eliminate that window? Just one window. That window isn't required for that particular unit. But I would rather leave the window.
And have higher rents.
Need to block it on the inside so on the outside it looks consistent.
I'm sorry, I just hate to build something and say, you know what, if you want to live here, you can live here. I think that is a horrible way to develop something. Some people don't have, we're talking, you know, home values are expensive. And so this is going to be an option for people that are in my generation. This is an option for people in my generation. And I just don't want to say, you know what, if you want to live here, this is what you got to live in. And I, and that whole bottom level, you're going to have low-level lights that are going to be shining in those windows, car lights constantly. That's my issue. And...
Okay, Roberta, you looking for one vote for all of these items that we have here? Or...
That is the question of the night. What would you like to do?
All right, the members on the commission, we seem to have difficulties with certain items along the way. So one vote for all of it probably is not going to do.
No, separate votes.
So there seems, there's eight different items here that we can vote on. So we've voted on each one of them because...
So the Plan Commission would be voting on A, B, C, D, so A through G. And then the zoning board would be voting on the major design exceptions, which is H.
I mean, A through...
A through, A through G is the Plan Commission. So we could call, call each one of those separately and have each one of the Plan Commissioners vote on those, if that's what you would like.
Yep. I think we can vote on A through H.
No, H is the zoning board.
A through G. We'd go to G.
Okay, 8 to 0. All right, then, is there a motion to approve the petitioner's request for A, Second Amendment to Ordinance 2003-123 to allow for 104 residential apartments in one building? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? You can second.
I'll second.
Secretary, call the roll.
John Miaso?
Uh, no.
Austin Hopkins?
No.
Jerry Callis?
No.
Mark Hopkins?
No.
Jim Lumberg?
No.
Okay, Item B, is there a motion to approve amending the special use for a PUD to allow for 104 residential units in one building?
So moved.
Second.
Secretary, call the roll.
John Miaso?
No.
Austin Hopkins?
No.
Jerry Callis?
No.
Mark Hopkins? Jim Lumberg?
No.
Item C, is there a motion to approve amending the approved preliminary and final PUD plan for a residential site plan? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Secretary, call the roll.
John Miaso?
No.
Austin Hopkins?
No.
Jerry Callis?
No.
Mark Hopkins?
No.
Jim Lumberg?
No.
Item D, is there a motion to approve amending the following exhibits attached to Ordinance 2003-123? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Secretary, call the roll.
John Miaso?
No.
Austin Hopkins?
No.
Jerry Callis?
No.
Mark Hopkins? Jim Lumberg?
No.
Letter E, is there a motion to approve the First Amendment to Ordinance 2005-124 to allow 104 apartment units in one building?
So moved.
Second.
Secretary, call the roll.
No.
Austin Hopkins?
No.
Jerry Callis?
No.
Mark Hopkins? Jim Lumberg?
No.
Letter F, is there a motion to approve amending the following exhibits attached to Ordinance 2005-124?
So moved.
Second.
Secretary, call the roll.
John Miaso?
No.
Austin Hopkins?
No.
Jerry Callis?
No.
Mark Hopkins?
Yes.
Jim Lumberg?
No.
And the last one is, is there a motion to approve the plat of consolidation?
So moved.
Second.
Secretary, call the roll.
John Miaso?
Yes.
Austin Hopkins?
Yes.
Jerry Callis?
No.
Mark Hopkins?
Yes.
Jim Lumberg?
No.
Point of order, I misvoted. I thought when I voted yes on F that I was on G. My vote on F is no.
So how many yeses do we have on G?
Two.
Okay, you got that correction?
Six yeses on G? So that's a roll call vote. There's not a quorum, right? Three. So there were three yeses on G. Okay.
It's kind of a moot point, is it?
Yes, yes, okay, but the Plan Commission does not. Okay. Okay. Okay, so H is variations from the downtown zoning overlay district?
Clarification, it's major design exceptions under the downtown zoning overlay district.
Okay. Any motions for that?
So moved.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Michelle?
Seconded by Charlie.
Now, are we taking each one of these individually or the, all of them?
What do you... Individually? For consistency, I think so. Oh, for consi, okay. George thinks we should do it for consistency. Individually.
Okay. George Cosiel?
Yes.
Joe Bano?
I'm not sure what we're voting on, what variance.
Yeah, I'd agree with Joe. I, everything else was discussed.
The first one is the corner side yard setback.
That's going down to the five feet?
Yes.
Northeast corner of the building.
Okay.
In that case, no.
Bob Picaro?
Yes.
Michelle Sarwas?
Yes.
Charlie Devoe?
No.
Mike Weirden?
I have four yeses on that, is that correct? Okay. Two. Okay. Do you have?
Okay, next one then on minimum rear setback.
George Cosiel?
Yes.
Joe Bano?
Yes.
Bob Picaro?
Yes.
Michelle Sarwas?
Yes.
Charlie Devoe?
Yes.
Mike Weirden?
Yes.
Next one, surface parking and loading location, rear yard.
George Cosiel?
Yes.
Joe Bano?
Yes.
Bob Picaro?
Yes.
Michelle Sarwas?
Yes.
Charlie Devoe?
Yes.
Mike Weirden?
Yes.
Next one, maximum height.
George Cosiel?
Yes.
Joe Bano?
Yes.
Bob Picaro?
Yes.
Michelle Sarwas?
Yes.
Charlie Devoe?
Yes.
Mike Weirden?
Yes.
Prohibited materials, remind me what this one's on?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Prohibited materials?
Yes.
What is that?
That is the aluminum, to allow the metal sheets aluminum composite.
Oh, yes, okay.
It's a minor facade material.
Right. That's what was passed around.
Right. George Cosiel?
Yes.
Joe Bano?
Yes.
Bob Picaro?
Yes.
Michelle Sarwas?
Yes.
Charlie Devoe?
Yes.
Mike Weirden?
Yes.
Minimum parking spaces?
George Cosiel?
Yes.
Joe Bano?
No.
Bob Picaro?
Yes.
Michelle Sarwas?
Yes.
Charlie Devoe?
No.
Mike Weirden?
Yes.
So did we, we had a quorum of at least four on each one, right?
We did, yes, that is correct.
So we shall pass on a positive recommendation?
Correct.
To the board.
And we closed the public hearing, right? Closed the public hearing, you did?
Yes.
Just checking.
Okay.
So how does that... For us, the village board would have to have a two-thirds vote to overrule us. What is it for the...
But I have to check with our village attorney.
Okay.
Okay, then that concludes the voting for this evening.
We need a motion to adjourn?
No, we need old business, new business.
Old business, new business.
I got old business, new business. Take care of it.
Okay, next item on our agenda is old business, new business.
It looks like each one of your boards is going to have a case next month, so we'll have a zoning board meeting, and we're going to have a Plan Commission meeting separately on your regular dates.
Regular days.
Regular schedules.
Yes.
Anyone on commission have any questions or comments?
I just hope I see everybody at the Fourth of July Fest. I'll be up there the whole time, so feel free to come up there and say hi. My man, fireworks. Fireworks, fireworks tomorrow night.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.